And thank you so much for joining us today. We have just about a packed house and it's so great to see all these smiling faces. As a reminder to our board and to the public, the board will not be engaging in outside electronic or digital communications during our meetings so that we can focus on the matters before us. And to my fellow board members, district staff, and any members of the public who may be speaking to the board, please make sure that your microphones turned on, speak directly into it so our YouTube and Orange TV viewers can hear you. And again, thanks for joining us this evening. I'm going to call on Board Member Felder. She has some comments, she wants to make some sad news. So let me call on Member Felder before we begin.
Thank you Chair. Good evening everyone. During the Florida Classic in late November, an OCPS icon fell ill and later passed away. Longtime coach and friend Max Purcell, a 1980 Evans High grad, he was his school's first All-State lineman. When I think of Max, I think of the fact that he was smooth, smooth operator, he still waters, still waters run deep. I never heard him say anything cross or yell at his players, but the players would tell you in the locker room, he was a different type of Max, I'm sure, because he needed to get the job done. He was a beloved mentor, father figure, and a wise counselor to several generations of young people. He taught subjects including PE, special education, and research and critical thinking. For the past 11 years, he served as a resource and past teacher. This position was perfect for Max, putting him directly in the path of students who are at risk, out-of-school suspensions. He was a life changer, a good man, and a very good friend. He will be sorely missed. I also want to acknowledge his family. They're here, if they could kind of probably stand to you, can see Max Purcell's family, they're here, his wife and his sisters and his family, they're here. And members of the Evans community that worked with him, if you're here also, they have joined, thank you, you may be seated, they have joined us tonight in his honor. Now, we have a resolution that I'm going to read, and then there'll be one that I'll give to the family. Whereas, Orange County Public Schools mourns the passing of a dedicated former employee who served with distinction and commitment, Maxwell Purcell, who departed this life on November 24th, 2025. And whereas, Maxwell Purcell faithfully served Orange County Public Schools for over 40 years, demonstrating professionalism, integrity, and a deep commitment to the mission of our organization. And whereas, during his tenure, he made significant contributions to Orange County Public Schools, leaving a lasting impact on colleagues and the community. And whereas, he will be remembered not only for his professional achievements, but also for his kindness, he was a gentle giant, kindness, generosity, and dedication to others. And whereas, Orange County Public Schools extends its deepest condolences to the family, the friends, and loved ones of Maxwell Purcell. Now, therefore, the School Board of Orange County hereby honors the memory of Maxwell Purcell and expresses its sincere appreciation for his service and contributions. Be it further resolved, that a copy of this resolution is going to be presented to the family of Maxwell Purcell as a token of our respect and gratitude. Signed, Melissa Byrd, District 7 School Board, Vicki Lane Felder, District 5 School Board. Thank you. And now, if you could please stand and join us in a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. The pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, you may be seated.
Thank you, Member Felder. And to the family, I also want to say thank you so much for the support that you gave to your husband, to your father, to your brother. He could not have done what he did for Orange County Public Schools if it weren't for the support and the love.
I'm so sorry.
Go ahead.
I forgot to recognize the members of Waikiki High School where he worked, present here, please stand, Waikiki family, I know the, yes, thank you, they worked with mine. Yes, thank you. I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
I just remember him, I worked with him in Evans, in Evans Water.
Yeah, absolutely.
I got about Waikiki so much.
All right, and his extended family from Waikiki, thank you for the support that you gave him that allowed him to be such an incredibly important member of our team here at Orange County Public Schools. Okay, Dr. Vasquez, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Chair, there are no changes to the agenda.
All right, thank you. With no changes to the agenda, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Mr. Pomerini, do we have?
Madam Chair, I believe there's, there's going to be a board member that's going to ask to move an item from consent to non-consent.
Okay. Any board members that are, want to make a change to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Oh, thank you.
I would like to move the agenda item for KESA, K-12, onto non-consent, please.
All right, we have a motion to amend the agenda as stated by Member Ferrante. Is there support for the amendment? And Member Ferrante, that would be a motion? Yes, a motion by Member Ferrante, do we have a second? Thank you, we have a second by Vice Chair. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed? Do, does the board need an explanation perhaps? No? Okay, okay, okay. All right, we have one member voting in the opposition? Two? Okay. Miss, Member Ferrante, you want to explain the reason for moving the item?
Yes, I just would like to publicly discuss more about the KESA K-12 and how we are going to utilize them and ways that we could utilize our own funding and not spend 900-plus dollars on each student that we would recruit, or that KESA would recruit into our system. It gets imperative that we discuss this and be frugal and fiscally responsible.
All right. With the reasoning behind that, all the members in favor of moving this to discussion, please raise your hand. Okay, four members in favor. Those opposed? One, two, three, three opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Am I correct in that? Okay, okay. I know, I think I missed one hand. Anyway, as the swing vote breaker, that would make it pass. So we will take that up after we've concluded with our public hearings. Thank you. All right. With that, that's an amendment to the agenda, I hate to be so specific about it, but we do need to vote on the amended agenda. So we have voted to amend it, is there a vote, a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Motion by Member Salamanca, seconded by Member Ferrante, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Okay. Motion passes to adopt the agenda by all members except for Members Gallo. All right. Moving forward, I would like to recognize the Pantera Choir from the, from Dr. Phillips High, which has been regaled as, regaling our guests in the lobby, I don't know how many of you all had an opportunity to hear them when I was walking through, they were absolutely incredible. So, the good news is, if you missed their performance, I think they were maybe warming up, I'm not quite sure, but we're so excited to have the opportunity to hear from them. Dr. Phillips has six choirs. Their vocal strand led by Son Lanki, is that correct? Son Lanki? Santiago is part of the school's visual and performing arts magnet. This magnet program was recognized on the national level by Magnet Schools of America both in 2023 and 2024. As a reminder to our audience and those watching at home, applications for the district's 39 magnet programs are still being accepted on the OCPS website for the 26, '27 school year, but not for much later. So if you're a student in attending, or children attending, your students attending, any of those, please look into that. Magnet programs are just another way that Orange County Public Schools differentiates themselves from so many other school districts, and we're just so proud to be able to offer unique programs such as this. So do, do consider that. And also, thank you, Ms. Santiago Ramsey, Principal Ramsey, and all of your talented, hard-working students. Now, on with the performance.
Silent night, holy night, all is calm, all is bright, round your virgin mother and child, holy heavens, so tender and mild, sleep in heavenly peace, sleep in heavenly Silent night, holy night, shepherd, wake at the sight, gloriously come heaven afar, heavenly host, sing hallelujah, Christ the Savior is born, Christ the Savior is born. Silent night, holy night, son of God, bless your light, rain and beings from thy holy face, with the dawn of redeeming grace, Jesus, Lord of thy birth, Jesus, Lord of thy birth. We wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year. Good tidings to you wherever you are, good tidings for Christmas and a happy new year. Oh, bring us some figgy pudding, oh, bring us some figgy pudding, oh, bring us some figgy pudding and bring it right here. Good tidings to you wherever you are, good tidings for Christmas and a happy new year. We won't go until we get some, we won't go until we get some, we won't go until we get some, so bring it right here. Good tidings to you wherever you are, good tidings for Christmas and a happy new year. We wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year.
Before, before they step away, did we get a picture Frank? Did you get a good picture of everybody?
I love a good photo.
Okay. And, and while you all are coming back, I'm telling you, that was just transformative. I don't know what everybody else's frame of mind was, but been a busy day, a little hectic, and I tell you, that was just, just so calming and so uplifting, so I want to thank you for that. I also want to tell you all, I could see a couple of the faces, but you all had the benefit of seeing the smiley faces and the performance from your side, but I had the benefit, and we had the benefit of Ms. Santiago, watching her, oh my gosh, it was such a joy, right? Oh, gosh. Anyway, I don't know what was more uplifting, the, the voices or the faces, it's a tough tie, but anyway, God bless you, thank you so much for being here with us. Now, can we get a picture? Ah, hang on.
Yes, and yes, Dr. Phillips, yes.
Of course.
I opened Dr. Phillips in 1987, that's right, some of y'all weren't even thought of, but that's okay. And it was a performance arts magnet program, I taught drama there and English, and when we were walking through, Dr. Williams said, you know Dr. Phillips? I said, I know, I recognize the singing, I know the voices. You guys were so beautiful. Oh my God, I enjoyed all of that, and still that nice soothing music. Thank you so much for your performance. Thank you.
Yeah. Wasn't that so soothing? Oh my gosh.
Good, big smile, be happy on three, good, one, two, and three, another nice big smile. Last one, and School Board, if you want to sing, go ahead. Good, no, okay.
I don't think we're ready.
Yes Frank, that soothing feeling we're having would be out, just out the window, just like that. All right, yeah, that was amazing, I'd like to have that just piped into my home when I walk in the door.
Wouldn't that be great?
Yeah, right? Oh my gosh. Okay, so now, I'm, okay. Now is that part of the meeting, when we have a chance to celebrate excellence among our staff, students, and community members? First, I want to share our wishes for a joyous retirement for a man who has left a giant footprint with OCPS, and that's Dr. Mike Armbruster, our Deputy Superintendent. So Mike, if you could please stand and join Dr. Vasquez down at the podium, am I correct, Dr. Vasquez? She has some, some thoughts and a small token of appreciation to share with you.
Today, we are here to celebrate and honor a leader whose vision, integrity, and unwavering dedication have shaped not only this district, but the lives of countless students, educators, and families across central Florida. That person is none other than Dr. Michael Armbruster. For decades, Mike has embodied the very best of public service. His work has never been about titles or recognition, it's been about impact. It's been about giving every student, regardless of circumstance or background, the opportunity to learn, to grow, and to succeed. Mike's leadership has elevated OCPS, strengthened our schools, and built a culture where excellence is expected, innovation is encouraged, and compassion is essential. He's played a key role in programs that opened doors for our students and initiatives that supported teachers and in partnerships that brought our community closure together. But when you look across this district, at the schools, the systems, the successes, you see his fingerprints everywhere. But what truly sets Mike apart is not just what he's accomplished, but how he has accomplished Mike leads with his heart, he listens before he speaks, he encourages before he directs, and he stands beside people, never above them. He has an extraordinary ability to see potential in others long before they see it in themselves. He's the kind of leader who makes you want to be better, the kind of mentor who guides with wisdom and patience, and the kind of teammate who makes everyone around him stronger. And for me, this is very personal. Over the years, he has become so much more than a respected colleague. He's become a dear friend, someone I deeply admire and truly, someone who's become family, the kind of family you choose, the kind you trust. The kind of family you choose, the kind you trust, rely on, and hold close. He is the person who celebrates your victories as if they were his own, who steadies you during challenges, who offers honesty when you need it, and encouragement when you doubt yourself. He shows up, not just for events or meetings, but for people, for moments, for life. To know him is to know loyalty, humility, and integrity. It is to know someone who does the right thing, not because it's expected, but because it's who he is. And to have him in your life is to be profoundly fortunate. Today, as we honor his service and leadership, we also honor the relationships he's built, the trust he has earned, the respect he has inspired, and the lives he's touched in ways that will be felt for years to come. His legacy is not only in the programs and policies he helped create, but in the countless individuals he's lifted, believed in, and guided. It lives in the teachers he empowered, the students he championed, and the colleagues he befriended. And so, Mike, on behalf of Orange County Public Schools, and from the deepest part of my heart, we thank you. Thank you for your vision, thank you for your leadership, thank you for your service, and thank you for being a friend, a mentor, and family. Your legacy will continue to shape this district long into the future. And all of us here today are better, better educators, better leaders, and better people because of you. And so, he joked Monday about his first retirement, because he retired during COVID. And I think your words were, you kind of got shafted? Because he wasn't really able to properly say goodbye to people. And so, one of the things we have for you is a memento, and it talks about your two journeys. Your first journey involves you at Westside Vocational Center from 1987 to 1994, then West Orange from 1994 to 2004, and then Ocoee High School from 2004 to 2010. And then, your second journey was from 2010 and 2013 at University at the Technical Center from 2013 to 2020. And then he left for a little bit, and then became back to be the Deputy Superintendent for the Division of Teaching and Learning. And so, Mike, you've changed the world because you've touched so many lives. Thank you.
Thank you all. So earlier today, I pulled up, from three and a half years ago, the night that I came back and was honored to be named the Deputy Superintendent. And I pulled it up because I wanted to see how long it was, to see if I could go longer or not. And it was 29 minutes, so I don't know that I'll go that. No, it wasn't, it was about two minutes. But what was interesting is, that night, the positive reception that I received was unbelievable. In fact, I remember, and I remember this without watching it today, but I remember Melissa Byrd saying to the superintendent, you know, this was your first major decision, and you hit a grand slam. And I remember thinking, wow, that's a lot of pressure to go home with. And so, I was supposed to say two years, and that was the commitment I had made. But I loved what we were doing, and I'd only gotten to second base by the second year. So I needed another year and a half to try to hit that grand slam that Melissa had mentioned. But a lot of things happened in that time, and I think a lot of positive things. I look around the room at people that... Wow. Sorry about that. The people that are in positions now, because they're the right people in the right place doing the right things. People that maybe other people didn't necessarily think should be in certain positions, but they are, and they've done amazing jobs. You asked three and a half years ago for the culture to change, and you hired the right superintendent. And I think the right superintendent, hopefully in my mind, hired the right deputy superintendent. And we were able to literally change the world of OCPS. And one OCPS became something more than just a couple of words, or I know OCPS isn't a word, but you know what I mean. But at the end of the day, I think we are better off than we were. I think the wisdom that the board showed in hiring Dr. Maria Vasquez as superintendent, and I don't know if I'll call it wisdom, or loyalty, friendship, trust, whatever it was. When she came to lunch that day, she set me up, and I didn't know it. I was happily retired, and I wouldn't have come back for anybody else but her. That's how much I believe in her. Over the years, and I don't need all the stories, she took care of me in some of my darkest times, and she also celebrated me in some of my brightest times. And so, it is family, it is all of that. To give you an idea of her character, and she did the one thing that I was hoping she would do. And I didn't, and I know she didn't want to do it, but she did it. And it was hard for her, I know. She didn't ask me to stay. And I know she wanted to ask me to stay. And I know every time I saw her, and I avoided her as much as I could, and she avoided me, so it would relieve the pressure. But the greatest gift she gave me, when I told her that it was time, that I needed to go, and my wife and I, we'd spent 40 years waiting, actually 41 years, not doing the things we wanted to do, and it was time for us to go do it, she didn't ask me to stay. And I know she wanted to, and I know that, and I kept waiting. And that really was the greatest gift, because honestly, if she'd asked me to stay, I would have really struggled going. And now I can go in peace, and I can go and live the rest of our life the way we want to do it. I'll always be OCPS, I'll always be around, who knows? I may be back here volunteering, who knows? I know I'll be reading some books and stuff. But Dr. Vasquez, thank you for being a lifesaver, a life changer for me personally. School Board, thank you for having faith and giving me the chance to do some of the things we did. I hope that whether I hit a grand slam or not, whether we hit a grand slam or not, really is important. I just hope that we're better today than, than we were three and a half years ago, because it certainly feels that way. And I think most of y'all will agree that it feels that way. And that was what we set out to do. So thank you all very much, God bless you, love you all, and one OCPS.
And don't, and, and don't, don't go anywhere. Okay, so I know board members have some, some comments they want to make. Let me just kind of summarize some of the thoughts that I know we'd all like to share about Dr. Armbruster. He's dedicated more than 35 years to our district, in roles including teacher, coach, assistant principal, principal, associate superintendent for career and technical education. And he came out of retirement to join Dr. Vasquez as her Deputy Superintendent. I'm really personally tickled to be able to say that along that route, he touched several of my children's lives. He was a graduate of, he was a graduate of West Orange High, and he started out in the private sector and quickly switched gears to become an educator. His first principalship was at his alma mater. He opened at Ocoee High School as its first principal in 2005, and pioneered what we today call a house system, dividing students into smaller learning communities. He's been a champion of professional learning communities, fostering growth through collaboration. He's been nationally recognized for setting a new standard for high-quality career and technical education. Dr. Armbruster spearheaded the unification of Orange County's technical centers into a single cohesive identity and brand, Orange Technical College. His vision also fueled historic enrollment, growth in CTE programs, and dual enrollment. Dr. Armbruster made sure all high schools have a dedicated career specialist, and oversaw the opening of numerous new workforce development programs and facilities. He championed agricultural education and brought agri-science and FFA clubs to all of our high schools. Because of him, OCPS has been able to give more students access to high-demand career training. Dr. Armbruster has influenced the culture of our district with his belief that character, quality, and professionalism are the foundation of a student and staff's success. He's never forgotten what it feels like to be a young person, not sure of their path. We will miss his big laugh, his big ideas, his reasoned counsel. We'll miss his willingness to try anything on social media. It's a beautiful thing. But more than anything, I will miss his sense of humor and his big heart. Let me call on some of our board members for their comments. Member Gallo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this picture up here right now just embodies who Mr. Armbruster is, at his, at his soul. He likes to have a good time, and whether he's working, or teaching, or learning, he's always having fun, and he always does everything with a smile on his face. So that, that is uniquely him, that's not unique to everybody. And we're all better for having him here at OCPS. The first time I met Dr. Armbruster, I was going to an event at University High back when he was the principal's. It was when Joe Saunders was our, our legislative representative for that area. And we were talking about some new legislation, some new guidelines that had just recently been passed. And Dr. Armbruster went up to Representative Saunders, and he said, you know, I have, I have an issue, some of these laws that just passed, I have like three or four students that aren't going to graduate now. And we need to get these fixed, like these kids are hardworking, and they deserve to graduate, and this one little thing is going to prevent them from doing that. What can we do to help these kids? So my first interaction, the first time I ever met Dr. Armbruster in person, he was advocating for kids. He was advocating for what's best for kids, to ensure that no child was hurt by anything that passed in Tallahassee. And that's just who he is. Like, that's just who I've known him to become, the work he's done in career and technical education. Orange County would not be in the position we are in. We wouldn't be a leader in that field and growing yearly without his leadership. I mean, he built it, him and Danny, with the FFA program, built what we have today. So to say that we will miss him again is an understatement. And the value that he's provided to the OCPS, the things that I've learned from him personally, things that he probably wouldn't even know that I learned, or I was even paying attention to, will carry with me in my leadership role. So I'm thankful to him. I'm thankful to Dr. Vasquez for bringing him back, because when she came to the board and she says, I think you're going to like who I want to bring on as Deputy Superintendent, we were all thrilled. We were all thrilled and knew he was a perfect person to lead us into this next chapter. So Dr. Armbruster, thank you. Thank you for your heart, for your grace, for your kindness, for really believing in all that OCPS is and all that we can be. I wish you all the best in your, your retirement. You deserve nothing but fun times and fun trips ahead. So congratulations.
Thank you, Member Gallo. Member Vannos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm probably the one who has had the least amount of time to spend with Dr. Armbruster, so I don't have as many good stories as maybe some of the others. But I will just say that I so appreciate his humor and energy and passion. They're just things I really admire in people. And he is the best storyteller. I hate when I have to speak after him at anything, because he's so very good at it. And I'll just share that, you know, the couple of times when we've gone out to lunch or we've chatted, no doubt, there was always a student that comes up to us and says, oh, Dr. Armbruster, I had you as a teacher or principal. And it's so exciting to see him again. I had, a couple of weeks ago, I had a running meeting with a current teacher, and when I shared that Dr. Armbruster was retiring, he said, you know, I wasn't sure that I was going to be a teacher, I was just a sub. And Dr. Armbruster, you know, as, as a substitute teacher, said to me, no, you belong in the classroom, you are good at this. And, you know, he's been at OCPS for many years now, so I know he's impacted so many people. And I'll just share probably my favorite conversations though with Dr. Armbruster, when it's just the two of us, is he'll say, Stephanie, I used to think, and I used to say some of the things that you say. And then he'll proceed to tell me why I'm misguided or why I'm wrong, but it's in the nicest possible way. And I so value the experience that I don't have, that he does have, that he shares with me. So I will miss you. I appreciate everything you've done for our district, and I wish you the best in retirement, Dr. Armbruster.
Thank you, Member Vannos. Vice Chair Salamanca.
Thank you, Chair. I echo so much of the sentiment that my fellow board members have said. Mike, just from the first time I met you, and I was probably just a student that would hear your name over and over again because of the many teachers and administrators' lives that you always touched. And you were just one of those school leaders that principals talked about, that APs talked about, in incredibly positive ways, that even as a student, I remember being like, who's this Mike guy that everyone is so excited about? And I, joining the board, I remember being so excited when Dr. Vasquez brought you on, and hearing from so many folks that this was really a statement on what the two of you were going to do in terms of culture and vision, and people-first approach to OCPS. The two of you are an incredible team. So I understand, Dr. Vasquez, and how hard this is for her and for her team. Your friendship, your work together has always been something that I've admired since being on this board, and I felt incredibly grateful to experience, because you make some parts of this job that are incredibly hard, less hard. Because we know that your heart is in the right place, your intentions are in the right place. And in a profession where it's so easy to get cynical, where complaints come a lot faster than solutions, and choosing to be the optimist in the room was something you always did, Mike. And not naively, I think you have been around long enough that you see problems very clearly, but you never let those problems become your story, or how you show up in the room, or how you're a leader. And you believed in what could be built here, and what it looked like to change the culture or directionally move different in what we've been before at OCPS. And you believed in the people doing that building, on who you would bring along, the kind of optimism that is contagious for anyone that has ever been around you or worked with you, and the type of optimism that just changes lives. It just changed the lives of so many students that you identified and work with and mentored. I mean, I, I can think of, I don't think I can think of one school board meeting where someone who has come up here has not been touched by you in the form of leadership, or being one of your students, or being one of your mentees. And I just got to say, I, I don't think we have enough leaders like that. It is the best gift that you gave OCPS, is all the people that you have showed how important that attitude, that optimism, how important that culture of building that is. And we're lucky that you have spent your time and dedicated so much of that work to the next generation of leaders. And so I just wanted to say thank you for that. You were always my go-to when I had a crazy creative idea. I was always like, I got to talk to Mike first, see what he thinks. Because he would always help me advocate for that. You were always thinking out of the box, but also just thinking about how it impacts people first, and our teachers, and our students. So thank you for everything you've done for OCPS. Your legacy will live on for so many years and so many different people in this district. We're so incredibly lucky to have you. And as Gallo said, go have fun, have some good food, travel the world, and enjoy all that's good out there, and hopefully all the less stress that you have every day here. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Member Ferrante.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mike, one of my favorite things is that you're always giggling down there. And we can never see you, but we know you're there. Oh, so even now, can't see you, but you're awesome. I am going to miss your Sunday messages. Every Sunday, Mike Armbruster would email the entire district, I believe. And you could read it on a Sunday, or you could wait until Monday, or the rest of the, you know, sometime during the week, just a word of encouragement and things. It was like the Sunday wisdom of Mike Armbruster. So I will miss that, unless you'd like to use your spare time and continue those. You could even do them once a month and just send it of the, all the... You could even do them once a month and just send it of all the fun things that you're going to do while you're away, even if it's not traveling every week, even if it's just spending time with your wife and enjoying life and watching the trees grow. So we thank you. Thank you for your years of service and your humor. My favorite thing about you, which everybody else has kind of said, but my favorite thing, anytime you got up to speak at an event, I would always sit up a little taller and lean in because I knew it was going to be a good one. So thank you for that. Thank you for your wisdom and your dedication and pouring your heart and soul into what you do. And it wasn't a job. It seemed more like you were having fun and you were mentoring. And it was a great position for you. So thankful that you came back and just praying the best for you. Bless you.
Thank you, Member Ferrante. Member Douglas.
Just want to say as well that it wasn't long that I knew really and talked to Dr. Michael Armbruster, but what a force, what a man of optimism and joyous, you know, just looking at him and you feel happy. When you come down in the building and you feel down, you hear that laugh, hearty laugh behind you and you cannot avoid smiling and regain your confidence and feel a little bit happy. Thank you so much for the, you know, bright light and for the sunshine that you bring into our lives every time we see you. And I just want to say your footprints, your footprints have also been in my house where you were also my daughter's principal. And everywhere I go in my schools, there's always somebody that comes to me and talks about Dr. Armbruster. So you are somebody that, you know, have touched so many lives and there are very few people in this life that have done that. And we will always remember you and remember who you are. And we want to be just like you a little bit every day. We thank you so much for what you've done for our kids and for our district. Thank you, thank you, thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Member Douglas. Member Felder.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Armbruster, I am going to miss the little stuff you say because see, they can't hear or see you, but I can hear and see you when crazy stuff is said and done. We have that look and we just kind of know each other. I'm just like, okay, yeah, that's crazy right now. But listen, when I first got introduced to Dr. Armbruster, I want to talk about, you've done so much, but what you've done for the technical student and the technical schools, how they love you so much and how you gave it a whole new look. I just appreciate because one of the schools is mine, Orange Tech, and you had the vision to know where to put people as our superintendent had the vision to know to put you in the position as deputy superintendent. You took us to a whole nother level when we look at technical schools and the decisions you made. I want to tell you thank you and I appreciate what you did. And so many of the principals that I would talk to, they would look forward to the emails that you sent and they said, I think Dr. Armbruster gets us. He understands because you, I keep hearing this on the rough side of the mountain, you know, you came up from the bottom up. You didn't just come like from flowery, whatever. You went through some stuff to get where you are today. So you can appreciate the position and you've not forgotten where you came from. And that to me speaks volumes. And in closing, I just want to say, Martin Luther King said something very profound. He said, people are not remembered for who they are, but they're remembered for what they do for others. And that is the epitaph for you, Mike Armbruster. Thank you for what you do and what you have done for OCPS. We love you. Thank you so much.
Member Byrd.
Thank you, Chair. So Mike, you know, I may have said that that decision was a grand slam, but you weren't on the other end of the phone when Dr. Vasquez called me to tell me that she was selecting you for her deputy superintendent. I screamed really loud and I'll never forget it because she was like, yes, I am. Like you just broke my eardrum. But I was so excited because I knew that it was the right decision and I'm sorry, but I was right. It just was. It was a terrific decision. You know, I was looking over, when I was preparing for the board meeting and going over the agenda, I wanted, I made a few notes about a couple of things that I actually was going to bring up a little later, consent agenda items that I was particularly impressed with. And when we, before a board meeting, they'll give us like board notes on, from cabinet meetings and the cabinet members that give notes about different consent agenda items. And the notes on three of these items, I thought were really interesting. One of them is an approval for a grant with Orange County. And the notes say, this grant is to provide equity, access, and opportunity for students through experiential learning. And the name of the staff member that gave that note was Mike Armbruster. Another item is another agreement, three-year agreement, this one also with Orange County Government for collaboration. This collaboration aims to provide students with valuable exposure to professionals in the wastewater treatment sector, which plays an important role in agri-science. And the staff member that gave that note was Mike Armbruster. And this, and the last one was an agreement with Mazda Motor of America. And this agreement promotes high expectations for student mastery at the professional level by providing qualified graduates to automotive industry with the intentional preparation and inspiration to achieve a thriving future. Notes by Mike Armbruster. So I just found it interesting that we're, you know, talking about him and honoring him tonight and all the work over the years that he has done to advance career and technical education in this district and raise it, as Member Felder said, to a different level, to the steak and lobster level. And that actually was my first interaction with Mike Armbruster at a Tiger Bay meeting before I was running for school board. And I shouldn't even say this, but the rumor on the street at that time was that he might consider running for school board. And so I had to, you know, meet him. And yeah, I probably shouldn't even put that idea in his head because, you know, he lives in my district, so. But anyway, so I was like, I remember telling my husband, no, that better not happen because forget it, I won't be able to run then.
He'll run for chair if he's going to run, not to worry.
So, but it was that Tiger Bay meeting, he spoke in front of, you know, all these people in Orange County about steak and lobster and how career and technical education isn't what it used to be and how it's, you know, this is a terrific opportunity for kids and they can have the best of both worlds. And I just remember then being so impressed with him, just as I always have. Every interaction has been remarkable. I've learned so much from him professionally and as a human being even. I am just, I'm so thankful, you know, there comes, there comes people in your life that you, you really make, make an impression that you know, as long as you live, that person will always, you'll always remember things that person said or things that person did. And Mike, you for me, you are that person. I'm so thankful that I got to know you. I'm grateful that I had the opportunity to work with you. And I believe that the lives you have changed, it's like that ripple in the water will go on and on and on and on. You've inspired so many other educators that are tremendous leaders. As you said, there's so many leaders out here now that were inspired by you and that will continue to inspire students. So thank you for everything. Thank you for your friendship. Thank you for always being honest with me and telling me how I could, like the time when you were in charge of OCAS, you were retired, so you didn't care what you told me and you just said, hey, this is what you can do to be a better school board member for your principals. And you were just honest and told me what I didn't do right and what I did do right. And, you know, I was thankful for that honesty. I always have been. So thank you for your friendship, my friend. And go and enjoy your beautiful wife and have a great time and we love you. Thank you.
Mike, would you please join the board in front of the dais for a photo?
First, if you would join me at the dais. Yeah, just, yeah. All right. All right. So I get, I get one last bite at the apple here. And it's on behalf of the board, although I do want to take a moment because you talked about Member Byrd and her comment about out of the ballpark. You see this picture here? The chamber was full that day and that was every person in the chamber. Every person was standing up, standing ovation and screaming. I've never heard this room so loud as that day. Whoa, it was amazing. So anyway, that you do that times whatever, the 100 and something people in this room. I wanted to, we have a small token of appreciation and recognition, but I want to explain for a minute to the public, I know it'll mean, I know it'll mean something to you, but lest it be misunderstood. As everyone's mentioned, Mike does his Sunday morning emails that are, each one of them are profound and each one of them is worth saving and reading and reading. But he has also started, just in the last few weeks, his countdown. And each day, there's a new message. So on his eighth day, he included a quote that was really impactful to him and it's always impactful to me. And he explains about the mission trip he took to Guatemala when he first read the quote and how important it was to him, to his school. And it's called Doing Good. So let me just read you that quote so that when you see what we have for Dr. Armbruster, it will make sense to everyone in the room. Do good, do all the good you can, by all the means you can, in all the ways you can, in all the places you can, at all times you can, to all the people you can, as long as ever you can. So the board would like to present to you Dr. Michael Armbruster. You did all the good you could in every way you served, impacting generations of students whose futures are brighter because of you. The School Board of Orange County Public Schools, December 9th, 2025.
Y'all can't see it, but there's a Batman logo on the bottom of it. That's why I'm laughing. So y'all may not know this, but I'm Batman.
All right, everyone down there so we can take a picture.
That's fun. Come on.
What did I say? I said something?
You're by your favorite people? Good. Big smile, big smile again, look super happy and come in really tight. Big smile, one more. And I think there's another presentation we have to, we have to get the photo. Okay, he's gone, he's gone. Jose, come on up.
Great.
You guys laughed. No, it did not. Big smile, big smile again, one more, look happy. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
They match so perfectly.
They are the colors.
All right, tonight we are also celebrating a few other exceptional employees. Yes, there are other exceptional employees in this organization. There are tens of thousands of them. So I'd like to recognize Board Member Felder to come down to the podium and share with us about her honorees. Yeah, we have this opportunity that each board member has to spotlight employees that they have seen or experienced their extraordinary accomplishments.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
Y'all ain't tired? Come on now, good evening. Come on baby, the children had to do it seven and a half hours, sit there and quiet. Come on. Yes. So now tonight, I have the absolute joy of recognizing, ooh, all righty, I feel tall. I have the absolute joy of recognizing a true treasure in our district, a woman whose dedication is the very heartbeat of her school. It is my deepest honor to introduce Ms. Margaret Harris, the incomparable school secretary at the great historical Jones High School. Ms. Harris, please come down, come forward to be recognized. Come right here. I'm going to read a couple of things about you. Every time I've ever gone on the campus at the games or whatever, she has never greeted me without a smile. And her smile just lights up the room. She is celebrating a magnificent 22 years of service to our students and staff. She is the steady hand that guides daily operations, but her influence extends far beyond the front office. She provides the welcoming smile, yes sir, and the consistent anchor that our students rely on every single day. There is one specific commitment that truly captures the spirit of Mrs. Harris and it's why she deserves every ounce of recognition tonight. Her unwavering presence at every single Jones High School football game, yes, she's there welcoming us. Yes. Think about that, every Friday night, rain, shine, season after season, cold, every baby just out there, honey, freezing, she out there with a smile. She isn't just an employee, she is a devoted fan, a mentor, and the most consistent cheerleader for those students, fueling their spirit on the field, in the stands, in the classroom. This is the definition of showing up for our kids. Ms. Harris, your love, your dedication, and your commitment to uplifting the students of Jones High School is an inspiration to us all. On behalf of this school board and a deeply grateful community, thank you for 22 years of excellence. Please join me in a very enthusiastic round of applause for Ms. Margaret Harris. Now I'm going to join you in the photo. And I have something wonderful for you. I used to always ask Mr. Torwood, who's that lady? She just always smiles. And I have something wonderful for you. I used to always ask Mr. Torwood, who is that lady? She just always smiles.
Do, before we, do we have family?
Oh, yeah, you have family?
We have everybody. Come on, family.
Okay, now, thank you. What a wonderful display of fidelity and school spirit. Now, we shift our focus to the classroom to celebrate another individual whose profound resolve changes lives every day. It is an honor for me to recognize Stephen Smith, a dedicated reading teacher at Molly Ray Elementary, who is his school's Teacher of the Year. Mr. Stephen, would you please come up? Yes. I remember going into his classroom and being excited, the way that he interacted with the students. I said, who is that guy? Ooh, he's wonderful. Mr. Smith has 15 years of teaching experience, including eight years here at OCPS. He has a special affinity for serving our third and fourth graders. And, and you do need that for those babies, yes, sir. But his star of perseverance is a compelling testimony, rooted in a challenge many of the students face every day. Mr. Smith, you have shared that you too struggled deeply with reading as a child. You remember the anxiety, the frustration, and the shame that came from feeling stuck. That personal journey is now the powerful compassionate core of your teaching philosophy. You don't just teach the mechanics of reading. You teach courage, resilience, and true tenacity. That's because when you look at a student struggling with a difficult text, you see a reflection of your own past. You see a young person in need of strong guidance, just like you were. That empathy transforms teaching into life-changing work. And the results of that passion speak volumes. In your classroom, you push students to believe in themselves. This past year, mm, my God, your class went from, mm, 17% of student proficient to remarkable 57%. A turnaround that represents dozens of young lives uplifted. You also serve as a lead mentor, helping new teachers find their footing and sharing your knowledge and expertise in reading instruction across the entire district. Mr. Smith, your unwavering conviction that every student can grow, no matter their starting point, makes you an invaluable leader and educator, a true champion of potential. Thank you for your relentlessness on behalf of the students and staff of Molly Ray Elementary. Please join me now congratulating Stephen Smith, and I have something for you also. Please give him another hand. Thank you.
Big smile, big smile again, one more. Perfect, thank you.
Do you have any people that are supporting you, please, Tom? Anybody that supports Stephen Smith?
Just like we're not, like respectful women sitting instead of standing.
Good. Waiting for the back row. Big smile, big smile again, one more. Perfect, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Member Felder.
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Vasquez, do we have any newly appointed administrators to present?
Yes, Madam Chair, we do. So, we are going to begin with Ms. Joni Casamento, who is going to be the principal at Endeavor Elementary.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much to school board members, Member Ferrant, Dr. Vasquez, Dr. Armbruster, Mr. Martinez, Dr. Jones, Dr. Leftecas, the Endeavor staff for this opportunity. I feel so humbled because the Endeavor community has given me so much ever since I was a first grade student going through those halls. So, to come back as the principal is truly magical. And I want to thank my mentors as well. Mr. Rodriguez, Mrs. Carolero, Mr. Linlaw, Dr. Helton, Mrs. Key, Mr. Diaz. Thank you for fostering opportunities for me to grow and be the best educational leader I can be. And to my mom and my friends and my family here today and those listening in, thank you for everything, your unwavering support. I couldn't do it without you. Thank you again, and thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Okay, next we have Mary Beth Jordan, who is crossing, uh, district lines. She is coming from Osceola County and she will be the new Assistant Principal at Okowi Middle School.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, school board members, Superintendent Vasquez, Deputy Superintendent Dr. Armbruster, Executive Leader Dr. Patty Fitzler, and Principal Leader Kelly Stank for the opportunity to serve at Okowi Middle School. I also want to thank Principal Sherry Lovett. It is an honor and a privilege to join you and your amazing staff in the important work that you are already doing for the Okowi community. I wish to express my deepest gratitude to my incredible mother, who's listening in, from Puerto Rico, my daughter, my husband, and to all my family and friends for their support. Thank you for your patience, your encouragement, and your belief in me throughout this journey. Your love and support make this moment even more special. I also want to thank, to take a moment to thank, uh, to express my sincere gratitude to all the administrators, teachers, and staff who have inspired me and shaped me into the educator that I am today. Your passion for education and your dedicated commitment to students have profoundly influenced me in my journey. Each of you have left an imprint on my life and I will carry those lessons with me as I begin this new chapter at Okowi Middle School. Thank you so much for this honor.
Claire Hamilton has been the Acting Assistant Principal at Vista Point Elementary. And tonight, we are making her the official Assistant Principal at Vista Point Elementary.
Thank you, thank you Chair Jacobs, the board, and Superintendent Vasquez for this opportunity to serve at Vista Point Elementary. I am humbled to be here tonight to accept the appointment. I want to thank Dr. Jones and Mindy Smith for their encouragement and guidance throughout this journey. Your support has been invaluable. To the amazing team at the Point, thank you for welcoming me so warmly and making me feel right at home. And special thank you to you, Lisa Suggs, for taking me under your wing and guiding me during these first couple of months as an Assistant Principal. Your support has meant so much. I am deeply grateful to Becky Edvabnik and Marion Campbell, whose leadership and mentorship during my years at Ridgewell Park shaped me to the educator I am today. They taught me the importance of compassion, perseverance, and always putting students first. I also want to thank my wife Veronica for her unwavering support and for always being there to encourage me, and my parents David and Suzanne for inspiring me to become a teacher and to never stop learning. As I begin this new chapter, I promise, my promise is to work every day to ensure every child feels valued and empowered to succeed. Thank you.
Jaclyn Hanson is going to be the new Assistant Principal at Sunrise Elementary. At Sunrise Elementary.
Good evening. Thank you Chair Jacobs, school board members, Superintendent Vasquez, Dr. Armbruster, and Dr. Raheem Jones for this opportunity to serve at Sunrise Elementary. I am truly honored to be entrusted with the role of Assistant Principal. I would like to especially thank Principal Leader Miller for this amazing opportunity. Thank you to Principal Leader Hankerson, Ms. Deborah Vereen, Ms. Sharice Hurdle, and Ms. Holly Watts for believing in me and supporting my growth with so many meaningful opportunities that have prepared me for this next step. To my amazing family and friends, thank you for always supporting me, cheering me on, and believing in me. I love you all. To Principal Brinzo, I am excited to learn from you, collaborate with you, and continue building a school where every child feels supported and inspired to grow. Thank you for this opportunity. I can't wait to get started.
Carla Kelly is going to be the new Assistant Principal at Hidden Oaks Elementary.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair Jacobs, esteemed school board members, Superintendent Vasquez, and closing in on former dais Deputy Superintendent Armbruster for the opportunity to serve OCPS as an instructional leader. I stand before you this evening deeply honored to be entrusted with such a privilege and responsibility. As I set forth on a new leg of my journey within OCPS, I would be remiss not to extend my enduring gratitude to those I consider lighthouses, cornerstones, and north stars along my path. To Dr. Raheem Jones and Principal Leader Lakeisha Miller, thank you for being lighthouses, speaking my name in circles where I did not stand, and guiding me towards a destination that is quickly becoming home. To the Gladiator Leadership Team from Riverside to Rolling Hills, my unofficial mentors, Ms. Sharice Hurdle and Mrs. Holly Watts, thank you for being cornerstones, for picking up the phone every time I call, reminding me where I have come from and encouraging me to see exactly where I'm headed. To Principal Leader Kimberly Hankerson, thank you for being a north star. Your steadfast model of leadership, defined by grit and grace, has been and continues to be a source of clarity and direction as I make in-the-moment and long-term decisions that impact students, teachers, staff, and families. I am deeply grateful for your relentless faith in me as a human, a colleague, and now a blossoming school leader. To my principal, Mr. Randall Longhouse, thank you for encompassing a lighthouse and north star in a very short time. Your outside-of-the-box thinking and style of leadership challenge and change me on a consistent basis. Your willingness to bet on me as your partner in upholding the pursuit of excellence, efficiency, and the highest academic achievement of the sweetest students in the district is humbling. And last, yet nowhere in the vicinity of least, my two daughters, I am immensely proud of the young women you are growing into. I would not be here this evening without your unending patience, humor, and enduring love and support. All that I do begins and ends with you. To close, I am truly overjoyed to be a permanent hawk and serve the communities of Hidden Oaks Elementary in Orange County. Thank you.
So, as you've heard, uh, Mike is retiring. And so, that needs, we, uh, that means we need someone to fill those big shoes. And we have found someone. Um, and that individual's name is, uh, Mr. Jose Martinez. So, just a little bit of background. Um, I met Mr. Martinez when he was a very young dean at Freedom Middle School, quite energetic, bold. And at that time, he was already demonstrating his leadership skills. Uh, and I have been able to watch him grow and thrive as a leader where his focus is on people first. And so, I have no doubt that although you, you are not Mike Armbruster, you're going to be an incredible, incredible Deputy Superintendent. The one thing that almost cost you the job, and you know what it is, is that he is a Yankees fan. And so, we are going to have to temper some of that, you know, emotion during baseball season. So, Mr. Martinez, you're recognized.
Go Yankees. So, good evening Chair Jacobs, members of the school board, Superintendent Vasquez. Thank you for the trust that you are placing in me. I'm honored to serve as Deputy Superintendent and humbled to serve our students, staff, and families. I want to recognize Dr. Armbruster as he retires. Mike, in your message today, you spoke about planting seeds. You've planted seeds in all of us and especially in me. I'm pleased to say that they've taken root. Tonight, I step into the privilege of nurturing that growth, watering what you planted so our students and our community can continue to flourish. To my family, my wife Dulsette, you believe in me on days that I doubt and push me to do the hard things with heart. You turn ordinary moments into strength and keep our home a refuge where purpose is always renewed. To my kids, who have been waiting patiently despite bribes from Matt Turner of ice cream later tonight, Kyson Farah, thank you for the hugs after long days and the laughter that resets my compass. You remind me that every child is someone's whole world. To my parents, Mom and Dad, watching from home. Mom, who retired from OCPS as a paraprofessional, taught me that every role matters. Dad, your hard work and humility shape how I lead. And to my sister, Meritza, a program specialist here, who never lets me forget that she's my big sister, and I've got plenty of text messages to vouch for that, for keeping me grounded and cheering the loudest. I look serving, I look forward to serving shoulder to shoulder with Dr. Vasquez, our board, and the teams so that all of our students continue to thrive. Thank you.
Can we have the, your two children stand up because we can't see all of them? So, could you guys stand up? There they are. There, wow. All right. So, um, with, uh, Mr. Martinez moving into the Deputy Superintendent's role, well, that left a void in the, uh, executive leader position for, for high schools. And again, um, the, the choice of Britt Dispensa was one that did not require a lot of thought. I have had the privilege of knowing Britt for several years. In fact, I, I remember, uh, having conversations with Britt when she became principal of OGA, No Small Feet. But even then, she led with grace, she listened to families, and she was able to build a community where we were just starting a brand-new program. She is an exceptional leader and I am thrilled that she is going to be the new executive leader for our high schools.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Vasquez, Chair Jacobs, school board members, Dr. Williams and Dr. Armbruster. It has been an amazing experience serving in the high school office and it is my privilege to continue the great work that we have accomplished over the last four years. I want to thank you all for your support and I will keep us on the positive trajectory of excellence. I also want to thank Mr. Martinez for believing in me and always coaching and teaching. I will always remember everything falls within the LPP. That's the legal, the political, and the practical. and the Practical. I also want to thank my HSO family, Martha, Kelly, Erica, Ally, and Lee, for their support as we continue to do what is best for the students of OCPS. I also have to shout out all the amazing high school principals and APs who believe in our work and give their all on a daily basis. I also have to thank my husband Jacoby for being extremely understanding and my biggest supporter. My two wonderful sons, Christian and Matthew, for sharing me with OCPS, and my mom who prays over me daily and is the voice of reason. And thank you to all of my previous bosses, leaders, previous mentors, colleagues, and friends. Each of you have played an important part of this journey, and I will definitely make you proud.
And last, but certainly not least, we had a position to fill for Principal Leader over the high schools. And I have to tell you that I've also known Matt for quite a number of years, when he was at Edgewater, and then when he went to West Ridge, and most recently, his time at West Orange. And I can tell you that when you walk on that campus, you can feel the focus on students, you see the positive relationships between the students and the staff, and that's what we want to be able to see in all of our schools. We want to be able to have learning and working environments where all of the people feel that they are supported, and that they are celebrated, and that they are successful. And so I am also very proud to introduce Matt Turner as the new Principal Leader for high schools.
Thanks so much, Dr. Vasquez. Thank you Chair Jacobs and the Board members. Dr. Armbruster, Mr. Martinez, Dr. Dispensa, Dr. Borders back there was a big part of my leadership. Mike keeps telling me to keep being myself, so I'm just going to keep doing that. I was the same person that came up to the board meeting in my pajamas a few years ago. I did get your blessings, but I keep being myself. I'm going to be honest with you about the last month, it's been really rough because I just got extracted away from 3,000 of my children, right? But I appreciate the opportunity, and I'm looking forward to making the most impact. I became an Assistant Principal because I wanted to make the most impact. I became a principal because I wanted to make even more of an impact. And your conversation with me, which I was a little reluctant at first, just to be honest, because I love the kids and I love the school, it's hard to leave there. But Dr. Armbruster's support and your support have been endless, and I appreciate that. I'm looking forward to my new role. I'm looking forward to trying to make a bigger impact. And what Mike said earlier, I'm sorry for the first names, but he's Mike to me, is absolutely true. We have the right leader, and I'm very happy to be working for you. Thank you.
Congratulations to all of you, those that are new in your role, and all the excitement that lies ahead, and for those of you that are now taking on new roles as experienced leaders. I can't wait to see all the things that we continue to do for our community, our children, and Orange County Public Schools. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Vasquez. Before we move on, two things, just for the record, I kind of standard formality up here for the most part, but he's Mike to us too. So, yeah, when he's not sweetheart or you're crazy. And I'm really excited pajamas, I did not know that part, so you will fit very well with this group, no doubt. Can we get a picture with everyone who's been promoted? And once again, Dr. Vasquez, out of Bog Park.
I haven't seen you, this is something to pay attention to. It's because you're too short, I can't see down there all the time.
That's going to be all of us in March, raising a child up here.
Yeah, bingo. Thank you for the invitation.
Raising a communal child, passing it around.
Invitation to the shower.
Oh, yes.
But now, thank you for the invitation.
Yes, to co-parents here.
I love giving parental advice.
You have twins, you've seen it all.
I don't give it to my kids.
I like parents who have figured out the shortcuts, the good, hard-won lessons.
Yes, that's me.
Other than, yes.
Yeah, I want to be a parent teacher, but I can't do that with my kids.
No, you can't.
My next-door neighbor adopted, and it was really cool. Yeah, because there were so many like little... Look at how precious we are forever. I know, right?
If you're a little small child and your dad just got a new job, come around the front a little bit.
He's so cute.
About the kids, prank.
I can't see you, so if you're a little tiny, there we go, thank you little tiny people. Good, look happy on three, good, one, two, and three, look happy again, stay there, one, two, and three, thank you.
We'll take a break right there, right?
Congratulations.
I think they have a break scheduled.
Usually, just as long as it takes for them to, yeah, just long enough for them to, but it's long enough for a special hygiene break. Yeah, go ahead and take a short one if you need.
I gotta go visit my Hidden Oaks heaps.
Okay.
I know, I want to go say hi to my...
Oh, go, go do, go, go, go.
So good to see you. Now we talk AI? Yeah, I don't have any questions.
I know you don't. Did you ever connect with that Smeaton link?
I did, I assignment now, let's see. I think we scheduled something.
Oh, good, 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 good.
Okay, we're back in session. Dr. Vasquez, I believe you have some students from Cypress Creek High School that are joining us this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do, as you know, I have a Student Advisory Council that is composed of representatives from all 23 of our high schools. And this evening, we are going to hear from the representatives from Cypress Creek High School. We have J.L. Perez and Isabella Reyes. Also with them today is Principal Fred Korn, thank you for being here tonight. And we are going to hear from both J.L. and Isabella about the great things that are happening at Cypress Creek High School.
Thank you so much. I've been wearing this whole time. Who is this gentleman?
Yeah, but there's no mouse.
The mouse is all the way up on the other screen. It's all the way over, here it is. Here it is there.
That one?
No, no. It's just, no, it's not there. Right there. It's right there, it's like a...
And they'll turn it over.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is J.L. Perez.
My name is Isabella Reyes. And today, we're excited to show you what makes Cypress Creek an incredible place to learn, lead, and show off the Bear pride.
Cypress Creek is full of spirit, energy, and opportunity. One of the things we're most proud of is our club diversity. With 75 different clubs, there's something for literally everyone. Whether you love music, healthcare, gaming, service, or just want to try something new, you can find a community here. And we don't stop there. We even partner with nearby schools for events and collaboration.
Nothing beats our school spirit traditions. Every Friday before football games, Wake Up Bear brings the hype with band, cheerleaders, and dance team pumping up the whole school. During Spirit Weeks, the tallyboard keeps grades, battling for the spirit stick, and our new Fun Fridays have quickly become a hit, bringing music, games, dancing, and a chance for students to relax and connect.
Another huge highlight is Connectivity Day, a whole event built around bringing students together. It gives everyone a free chance to meet new people, join clubs, and feel like they truly belong. It's about togetherness, opportunity, inclusion, and getting more students excited to be involved on campus.
And finally, our activities in the Creek Collage shows what Cypress is all about. Packed events, student showcases, clubs, performances, Spirit Days, and more, it's proof that our students are engaged, active, and proud to be Bears.
Thank you so much for listening, and remember, with kindness, confidence, and accountability, we are becoming better people for a better world. Go Creek. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Member Farah?
Thank you. Okay, you guys are amazing. First of all, thank you for being so patient. You have, it was worth the wait. I absolutely love seeing what you're doing at Cypress Creek. Mr. Korn, you have been transformational. I love your spirit and enthusiasm and excitement. You gave us some sunglasses, and they remind me of you with your sunglasses and your bullhorn. Amazing, I just love it. You have just a personality all of your own, and I feel like it's really bleeding into the school and creating just a new, just uplifting the culture that was already there, but really giving it a new boost. And the Connectivity Days, I was there at the first one. Wow, you really do have 75-plus different groups and clubs. I love how there's something for everyone, and just the enthusiasm even at the beginning of the school year, getting the families together and really building that culture and pouring into the kids where they feel like they want to be there, and it's exciting, and they can connect with others, is a huge thing. So thank you all for coming tonight and representing Cypress so well. So fun to see each of you here, and thank you again for your families who are here as well. So you guys are amazing.
Yes, please. Picture? Yes. Can we get you all up for a picture? Alright, we also have reports, I think, or comments from Clinton McCracken, President of the Orange County Classroom Teachers Association. We had Ron Pollard, but I believe he had to leave us, so, yes.
Thank you. Good evening to all our amazing educators watching, Chair Jacobs, members of the board, and Superintendent Vasquez. As we approach winter break, many educators are looking forward to a moment to breathe, to rest, reconnect, and remember why we do this work. I truly hope, I also know winter break won't mean rest for everyone. I hear every day from educators working second and even third jobs to makens meet, driving for ride shares, delivering food, picking up restaurant shifts. Last night, I spoke with a teacher working part-time at a hotel to bridge the gap. This is the reality for far too many. Florida ranks 50th in the nation for average teacher pay. That's the backdrop as educators try to build stable lives and raise families while giving everything to our students. As we head into the legislative session, we ask our community to stay engaged. We need a bold, united voice demanding the resources public schools require and the professional respect every educator deserves. Teachers can't afford another year of being told to do more with less, all while even more is added to their full plates. This weekend, CTA is hosting a Public Education Roundtable Brunch with faith leaders, elected officials, community partners, advocates, and educators. It's a solutions-focused conversation about the real challenges facing Orange County's public schools: funding, voucher expansion, charter colocation, the threat of school closures, and outside corporate profiteers trying to carve up our public schools. Our neighborhood public schools are the heart of our communities, and the work educators do every day is life-changing. We know the community stands with us in demanding a better path forward for public education here and across the state. And we look forward to this important conversation with our community leaders. CTA is fighting every day for a strong, thriving public education system, one worthy of our students and of the professionals who show up for them. Our teachers deserve stability. They deserve respect, and they deserve to focus on their classrooms without depending on late-night delivery shifts to pay for their rent, gas, or groceries. As we close out the year, I want to wish every educator, every family, and every OCPS employee a wonderful holiday season, one that's restful, joyful, and filled with the people and the moments that matter the most. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, thank you, Mr. McCracken. We also have Amy McHale, President of the Orange County Association of School Administrators.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Chair Jacobs, Board members, Superintendent Vasquez, Deputy Superintendent Armbruster, staff, and community members. As mentioned, I'm Amy McHale, the current OCASA president, as well as the proud principal of Sunridge Middle School. On behalf of the Orange County Association of School Administrators, I want to thank you for the opportunity to share a few updates as we close out this calendar year and look forward to the months ahead. Our first update is to tell you about our high school senior scholarship fundraiser. We gave high school scholarships last year, but this year, we have a planned big fundraiser to hopefully up those scholarships. We're excited to announce our first annual golf tournament sponsored by OCASA scheduled for March 5th at Stony Brook West Golf Club. This event is going to be more than just a day on the course. It's a vital opportunity to raise funds for our student scholarships. And these scholarships, as you know, will help our students achieve higher education and their dreams. We invite board members, staff, families, community partners to join us, whether playing, sponsoring, or volunteering. Together, we can make a lasting impact on the lives of our students, and we're super excited about this first golf tournament. As we move into the second half of the school year, our focus remains clear. Just to go over a few of those focuses, one, of course, first, ensuring academic excellence by strengthening literacy, math achievement across all grade levels. We continue a focus on student well-being by encouraging mental health supports and fostering safe, inclusive environments that increase our students' sense of belongings. We plan to continue strong college and career readiness by enhancing pathways through dual enrollment, career academies, and mentorship programs. Our instructional focus will continue to strengthen our skills through the work of our school-based PLC-guiding coalition teams and empowering teacher coalition. And last but not least, community engagement. We look forward to building stronger partnerships with our parents and local organizations to support student success. We are committed to ensuring that every student at OCPS has the tools, resources, and encouragement they need to thrive. Finally, as we enter this holiday season, we extend our warmest wishes to each of you. May this time bring joy, rest, and reflection. And as we welcome the new year, may it be filled with renewed energy, collaboration, and continued progress for our schools and our community. Again, thank you for your ongoing support and dedication to the students of Orange County. We look forward to working together in 2026 to achieve even greater success. And to Dr. Armbruster, we don't say goodbye, we say, see you later. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McHale. Thank you so much. Next, we have a strategic plan update. Dr. Vasquez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am very excited for you to see this presentation. Maurice Dragon, our Chief Information Officer, we also call him our AI guru, has put together a presentation. It was shared with our, the superintendent's teacher advisory committee cabinet has, some elements of this have been shared with them. And so you will see what we've been doing in the area of AI, and I think you will be very impressed. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dragon.
Thank you, Chair Jacobs, members of the school board, and Superintendent Vasquez for your time today. This presentation was created using AI as a thought partner. Microsoft Copilot has a voice mode that allows you to have a conversation with AI. I use the voice mode in Microsoft Copilot to plan and create the initial draft of this presentation. Today, as we discuss artificial intelligence, I will provide a definition of what AI is, share experiences on its, of its application, and its implementation in our district. One frequently used term when discussing artificial intelligence is grounding. Grounding is starting from a common ground or a shared level of understanding. On this page, you'll find a definition of artificial intelligence created by Google Gemini, an artificial intelligence tool, along with a citation for that definition, which was also created by Google Gemini. As mentioned in the definition, artificial intelligence refers to a program that can emulate the intelligence, thinking patterns, and decision-making processes of humans. AI systems are typically composed of four main components: pre-training data, machine learning layers or agents, the AI model, and the user interface. Data serves as the foundational information that AI uses to learn patterns and make decisions. Layers within the model are internal components that transform and process the data in stages, enabling the model to understand complex relationships and features. The model is the core system that processes this data, learning from it to perform tasks such as classification, prediction, or generation. And the graphical user interface is what you see when you use it as you interact with the AI system. An AI system is similar to a school district or a classroom. Just as AI relies on pre-training rules that governs its functionality and the information it processes, a school district, for example, operates based on school board policies, meetings, and decisions that shapes its operations. An AI system uses machine learning or agents to efficiently manage tasks. A school system has cabinet members and divisions to address specific concerns such as facilities or human resources, ensuring experts are readily available. These resources are consolidated into an AI model like ChatGPT, Copilot, or Google Gemini. In a school district, the superintendent leads the system, ensuring that the work of the cabinet, divisions, and the school board rules are cohesive. AI has a graphical user interface, which is where you see and interact with the AI model. Conversely, in a school district, you can understand school board policies and processes by attending a school board meeting or work session. Google Notebook will be used today as a model of what AI, will be used today as an example of an AI tool that has an interface that visually demonstrates the components of the AI system. Google Notebook has a dedicated section for adding PDFs, Google Drive resources, and links to the left that mimic the pre-training or the grounding data. It also includes a center section for asking questions about your resources and a pseudo area for generating podcasts and other digital media. Let's review some examples of Google Notebook as an AI system. In Orange County public schools, we have over 250 separate documents that represent board policies and management directives. All the policies and management directives have been added to a single Google Notebook on this slide. This pre-training data serves as a foundation for the AI model, enabling it to answer questions based on the documents provided. This approach offers a powerful and efficient way to quickly evaluate, understand, and access the information contained within the board policies and management directives. When a question is asked, Google Notebook provides a number next to every sentence that indicates the source of the information the AI provided. This allows you to verify the summary provided, and you can also click on the number to go to exactly the section of the document used by the AI. Attending school board meetings can help you gain a comprehensive understanding of the board's guidance and decision-making. It may be difficult, however, to attend every board meeting. However, it is possible to miss important questions or feedback from board members even when you are there. Google Notebook LM provides a practical solution by allowing you to add the YouTube link from our school board meetings directly to a Google Notebook. The platform can process the automatic closed captioning from these meetings from YouTube, enabling you to treat them as searchable sources. You can pose questions about a single meeting, or you can ask about multiple meetings simultaneously. For example, I created a Google Notebook containing Orange County Public Schools Board Meeting since February of this year. I can ask Google Notebook to identify discussions about dual enrollment and the dates those discussions took place in front of the school board to gain a better understanding of the board's feedback on that issue. Lesson planning is an essential component of every educator's day. A wide range of resources are available to support this process, including lesson plans created by individual educators and those provided by the district. By leveraging tools such as Google Notebook, educators can organize and curate lesson plans, enabling them to develop materials that address the unique needs of their students or to supplement existing lesson activities with additional examples. On this slide is a video created by Google Notebook to help students identify common mistakes made when working with exponents. Google Notebook was given the lesson plan in a PowerPoint format, and it made this video from that PowerPoint. I'm going to play a piece of the video here. Hey, welcome. Today, we're going to crack the code on a fundamental piece of algebra that honestly shows up everywhere, exponents. If you've ever felt a little shaky on these, you're not alone, and you are definitely in the right place. We're going to clear it all up. Okay, let's just dive right in with a problem that trips up a lot of students. So we've got Leilana and Kamari. Leilana wrote 2 to the power of 4, and she showed her work as 2 times 2 times 2 times 2. Kamari wrote something different to get to 16. Now, one of them is spot-on, and the other made a super, super common mistake. Take a look. Who do you think got it right? It goes on, but I had to cut it off. Hey, welcome. Google Notebook offers a great visual representation of how pre-trained AI models and machine learning works together. Let's explore how the graphical user interface facilitates interaction with the AI model. Most AI models typically have a single area at the bottom where you can input a question for the AI model to process. Sources and agents are hidden behind the menus or cannot be seen at all, at all. To ask a question, you enter a prompt, which is essentially the question you are asking. Here are some quick and fun examples of prompts that can be entered. Google Gemini has a built-in image generation. You can enter a prompt that will convert the text into an image. If you upload an image you have, the text will be applied to that image. For instance, I uploaded a picture of myself and entered a prompt to turn my picture into a figurine placed on a computer desk. Here you can see the prompt, and you can see, here you can see the output of that prompt. I asked also for my picture to be transformed into a professional photo, which is the second image on this slide. The third image on this page is actually a video that I created using AI. I took a picture of myself, and I put in a prompt to place myself in a school hallway saying, "Welcome, welcome to our school. We're so glad you're here." And this was the result. Welcome to our school, and we are so glad you are here. So, AI me sounds nothing like me, but... AI is more than writing. There are AI tools that can help a user in a variety of creative and professional work. OCPS has approved ChatGPT, Google Gemini, Microsoft Copilot for staff use, and Adobe Firefly and Camigo for staff and student use with guardrails such as no personal information being shared or used to train the model. We have provided professional development in various formats for teachers and staff. For example, there is a training called AI Literacy for Teachers, a two-day district-funded, sub-covered professional learning series that schools can sign up for. We have also provided on-demand and site-based training sessions to learn more about approved AI tools and how to integrate them with standard-aligned instruction. The 2025-26 Media Special Series includes a dedicated AI in the Media Center session focusing on library-led support for AI use, curation, and research skills. OCPS is coordinating also with Khan Academy on the use of Khan Migo in high schools. Our AI initiatives are tailored to align with the OCPS 2030 Strategic Plan and departmental priorities and not as standalone efforts. The following slides will highlight conversations taking place at the district level and within the AI working group about AI. Conversations have focused, for example, on reducing staff burden through automation and the use of AI chatbots that can assist with frequently asked questions. The Onflow, formerly Let's Talk Power Chatbot, on the district's website, answers questions asked by using AI to gather information from across the entire district, for example. District and AI working group conversations have also emphasized the whole child and the whole school support, cross-departmental collaboration, and tiered interventions with a focus on access to AI resources across schools. We have also taken steps to review and approve AI tools that follow laws such as the Children's Internet Protection Act, SIPA, and the Children's Online Privacy Protection Act, COPA, as well as to block AI tools where validation cannot be established and appropriate use of student and staff data cannot be found. Training and building capacity are critical components of our continued focus on AI. We continue to focus on what I call the AI sandwich, processes that begin with a human, use AI, and end with a human making the final decision and application. The district has also begun conversations about AI policy. This requires feedback and support from key partners. We will prioritize developing an AI policy that addresses current technologies while remaining adaptable to future advancements in artificial intelligence. We also want to develop resources to help teachers, students, and other district staff use AI effectively. On November 12th, the superintendent's teacher advisory committee met to provide feedback on the use of AI from a teacher's perspective. These feedback points will play a critical role in the development of an AI policy and guidelines. Elementary teachers shared they are leveraging AI primarily as a supportive tool to enhance their instructional practices. They use AI as a teacher's assistant to plan lessons, differentiate reading and math materials, create visuals, and draft parent communications. They emphasize AI saving time and providing accurate vetted content while ensuring it does not replace the human component of teaching. At this level, student-facing AI is minimal, as teachers prefer to use AI themselves to... to indirectly support students. Regarding professional learning, most elementary teachers report feeling only somewhat confident using AI, while fifty-nine percent of those who attended, who were there, said they have attended some type of AI training and forty-one percent have not. Their preferred format for professional development includes hands-on demonstration and subject-specific integration training. These preferences highlight a strong desire for practicable in-person learning and experiences that build trust and skill with AI tools. Elementary teachers who were surveyed also see significant potential for AI to alleviate administrative burdens. The majority believe AI could assist with routine communication tasks such as translating and drafting parent emails and newsletters, and seventy-three percent sees utility in data entry. More than half also recognize AI's potential in helping with forms and reports, including IEP paperwork. Teachers envisioned quick wins like AI-generated data reports in parent-friendly language, compiling behavior logs, scheduling events, and generally speeding up paperwork. On the governance front, elementary teachers are calling for clear guidelines and safeguards around using AI. They want explicit dos and don'ts for staff use, including rules on protecting student data, verifying AI-generated content for accuracy, and maintaining professional integrity. There were also concerns about student use of AI with most teachers believing young students should not use AI unsupervised to prevent misuse or shortcuts in learning. Elementary teachers believe that AI should be voluntary and not mandated. Middle school teachers provided feedback that they are using AI for a variety of instructional tasks including lesson planning, creating assignments, grading support, and providing student feedback. Some teachers have begun using AI to generate writing prompts and offer automated feedback on student responses. Differentiation remains a key benefit with AI helping tailor reading levels and providing multilingual support. However, teachers cautioned against students becoming overly dependent on AI and advocated for its use in scaffolding learning and engaging students under teacher supervision. In terms of professional learning, forty-five percent of middle school teachers who attended reported being somewhat confident in using AI and fifty-five percent have already had some AI-related training. And notable sixty-four percent expressed a desire for hands-on demonstration of AI tools and the equal percentage favored peer learning sessions. Middle school educators prefer collaborative in-person learning environments where they can share experiences and strategies with colleagues rather than online courses. The middle school teachers surveyed also identified administrative tasks, particularly paperwork and documentation, as a primary area where AI could provide relief. All respondents indicated that forms such as intervention tracking and disciplinary referrals consumed time and could benefit from AI automation. Additionally, eighty-two percent pointed to communication tasks and seventy-three percent to data entry as areas where AI could offer support. Teachers who were surveyed saw potential for AI to enhance parental engagement systems and student intervention tracking with suggestions including AI-assisted class scheduling, flagging schedules or behavior issues, and generating accessible reports for parents and staff. On the policy front, middle school teachers strongly advocated for comprehensive AI guidelines for both staff and students. Concerns about plagiarism, cheating, and misinformation were cited by ninety-one percent of those who took part in the survey. Middle school teachers recommended limiting and monitoring students' use of AI, possibly through restricted versions of approved resources. They also emphasized the importance of teaching students responsible AI usage and proper citation practices. For staff, they asked for clear rules on data entry, verification of the AI outputs, and transparency in AI use. Teachers raised additional concerns about the integration of AI policies into existing resources such as the Code of Conduct. At the high school level, OC, the high school teachers that were surveyed are exploring advanced application of AI in their instructional practices. They're using AI to differentiate content and assignments such as finding readings at verified varied lexile levels and creating alternate versions of tests. AI also assists in data analysis, planning, unpacking standards, analyzing student performance data, and drafting components of IEP. Additionally, some teachers incorporate AI into college preparation activities, including SAT or ACT practice. While recognizing AI's potential to enriss instruction and provide real-world examples, high school teachers are cautious about preserving the human factor in teaching. They emphasize that AI should not replace the teacher expertise or student critical thinking, especially given the high stakes of graduation and college readiness. AI is seen as a tool to enhance rigor, generate higher-order questions, and visualize abstract concepts, all under close teacher oversight. Regarding professional learning, high school teachers exhibited a wide range of confidence levels, including twenty-one percent feeling confident, thirty percent feeling only slightly confident, and sixty-four percent who have said they've received some AI training and they continue to seek more. Their top requests were hand-on demonstration of AI tools with fifty-seven percent expressing interest. Additionally, twenty-nine percent were interested in sessions comparing different AI platforms. They prefer a mix of training formats, including in-person workshops, seventy-one percent, online courses, forty-three percent, self-play tutorials, all of this indicating a need for both group learning and individual exploration tailored to their specific subject areas. The high school teachers surveyed recognized the value of AI in managing the extensive data and communication demands of grades nine through twelve. Approximately seventy-nine percent believe AI can assist with data entry tasks such as uploading grades and tracking credits, while many see its utility in generating performance reports and conducting graduating graduation requirements audits. AI is viewed as a helpful tool for streamlining parent and student communication, including writing emails and recommendations, and specific high school administrative tasks like managing transcripts, scholarship applications, CTE certification tracking. These are all areas where AI could support, could provide support, including for counseling counselors and teachers. Some educators also use AI to create substitute plans and rubrics efficiently. However, there is concern that increased efficiency might lead to larger class sizes or heavier workloads, which teachers cautioned against. On the governance side, high school teachers are particularly concerned about academic integrity and data security. A significant ninety-three percent identify plagiarism and cheating as top concerns related to AI use. They advocated for updates to the Student Code of Conduct to address unauthorized AI use and implementation of tools to help detect plagiarism. Teachers also worry about bias and accuracy in AI-generated content and they seek transparency regarding the resources that AI systems utilize. Data privacy is also an issue, given the sensitivity of high school students' personal information. Teachers call for assurances that AI platforms meet privacy standards and express concern about the long-term implications of AI on job security. They urge district leadership to provide clear statements in AI's role in education and the protection of teachers' positions, emphasizing the need for ongoing governance and teacher involvement in policy development. We've taken deliberate steps to ensure that the integration of AI within OCPS will reflect input from diverse stakeholders, align with the OCPS 2030 Strategic Plan, and provide practical guidelines for teachers and staff. We have additional initiatives planned this year to establish comprehensive policies and processes and guidelines for AI usage. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to Superintendent for remarks, followed by questions and discussions from the board.
Thank you, Maurice. As stated, he presented to our Teacher of the Year Advisory Council and they gave us great feedback. It's clear they want more training and they want it in person and they want to have it integrated with the tools that we currently have. And so I am tasking our team to put together trainings that we will be able to offer to our teachers over the summer, pay them to attend, so it's not conflicting with work that they are already doing. And we plan to go back to our next teacher advisory meeting, which is, I believe, the end of January and we'll share what we are doing based on that feedback. It is clear from some of the things that Maurice has shared that we have some teachers that are doing just an outstanding job integrating AI in the classroom. They're using the tools with the students and helping them understand how to use AI ethically so it's not running into some of the issues of plagiarism and really how it should be used and when used properly, it can be an incredible tool. So we are ready for any questions or comments that you might have. I also want to add that board member Salamanka sits on the AI Task Force as well. And so she has also contributed ideas and has helped push us along as, you know, you need to go slow to go fast.
Okay, we have a full lineup. Let's start with Member Gala.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I feel like my life has been inundated with AI lately. I've gone to several conferences and the theme with at Excelin Ed and at FSBA was all about AI. So the, I have a couple of questions. The first is the the notebook that you're, the Google Notebook, the LM. I think Dr. Vasquez mentioned that you're uploading all of the policies and directives into the Notebook LM. So when will the board have access to be able to use that chat box to ask questions? Because that would make our life immensely easier than me calling John and going, John, what policy number is this?
I can certainly share the link to the, to the look with all board members. I think that will, it'll still be the piece where John as that final check will still definitely, I think, be necessary, but it can definitely give you, it'll definitely point you in the right direction. So I'll make sure I share that link.
Yeah, and I would love like we, I went to a class last week where they kind of, Google was there and Google walked us through how to do Notebook LM and all the benefits. They showed us the podcast, how to make a video and did all those great things. But I would like to get down more to the nitty-gritty on how the board could use it to maybe do videos for our constituents, things that we could share in like little clips. So I would love a little training for the board on how to do that because I think that would be invaluable.
Dr. Vasquez?
Yeah. I think we have a planning session that is coming up and so we may be able to carve out a little bit of time for Maurice to do some demonstrations. He does quite a bit for Cabinet. He also has some videos that he has kind of put together that kind of walk you through, but I'm sure you're all much more literate in technology than I am. But I often need for him to do a slower step-by-step tutorial with me. So we'll, we'll get with Dr. Williams and squeeze in a little bit of time.
Great, thank you. And then you talked about the board meetings. Did you upload the board meetings from YouTube into Notebook LM? And if you did, can we have the, can we have the little link to that as well?
I can certainly also share that link, yeah.
Awesome. Listen, I know that Chair Jacobs watches hours and hours of YouTube trying to find past things that have happened. All you have to do is put in, what was the vote on this and it'll spit it out to you.
I know. When I heard that, I was like, oh my god.
I mean, it's such a time saver, so I would love that link.
Like I, I will cut and paste the transcript and then, and that's only on the meetings where we have transcripts. That's not, you know, the work sessions. And then, yeah, and then I'll do a word search for words I'm looking for. That tedious process has, I thought that was like cutting edge.
You won't have to do that anymore.
Whoa.
I know.
Whoa, I know I'm.
You won't have to do that anymore.
Listening to presentations, checking off the hours that I'm not going.
And I'm super excited that he did all the work on the upfront, unloading everything in, so now all we get to do is ask it questions.
Exactly.
So I'm assuming because you're using Google that the information is encrypted at every level. Like so there's, so no, there's no data privacy concerns, no matter what we do. Google doesn't have access to it. Nobody has access to anything that we upload into Notebook LM.
That is correct. So the Google Notebook LM is managed by the same privacy policy we have with our, in our Google workspace overall and the contracting we have with Google. So there is no training on any of our data and our data is private and it is our data.
Awesome. And then the only thing that I know that we're looking at a policy on AI. My, my, my biggest concern with AI is the lessons that we've learned kind of like from social media. We need to be on the forefront in securing and ensuring that our students' privacy and data is safe. But there is a trend that is disturbing where students are using chatbots for emotional support and they're using them as companions instead of having friends. So when we're looking through that policy, we need to ensure that that's not allowed on any of our devices for the safety of our students. I think when looking at this, we almost need to create a standard of care for AI use. Like what is our standard of care going to be for our students to ensure that they do stay safe? And that they're not replacing human friends with chatbots because I mean, chatbots will tell you what you want all the time. I will tell it it's wrong and it will say, you are so smart. Thank you for letting me know. And I'm like, oh geez, thank you for telling me I'm smart. But they will tell you what you want to hear. So I just want to make sure that when we're looking at that, that we're just aware and not allowing students to use that for emotional support. What about hallucinations? Cause I know a lot of time, I'm a big believer that students at the high school level, if educated properly, I think AI could be a really good research tool for them. They can cite resources. It's a lot quicker for them to find that information, but we have to ensure that the information given to them is valid information and not a hallucinating. So what are we doing to minimize a hallucinations that might come out of the AI use either by our staff or our students' use?
One of the reasons why I've, we're really looking at starting off with Google Notebook LM is that Notebook LM utilizes.
Data that is imported. Okay, so it's only, it's only uses the data that's imported in it, right? So there will be no hallucinations.
I, I won't say there will not be any hallucinations, but when it provides you a response, every response has a number next to it. You can click on that number and you can go right to the source and you can verify yourself. Now, the other thing I will say is that as Dr. Vasquez shared, there are teachers that are using not only Notebook, they may be using, for example, Google Gemini or some of the other tools that may not have that direct reference. One of the things that I've just been very heartened by is that the teachers that have communicated with me, they are teaching their students that exact piece around checking for hallucinations, checking to see if the data that they're getting back actually matches when they go back to the source. And they're asking the AI, provide your source, and then they're going in there checking that source. So there's both going to be a, a training, but there's also a practice piece that'll, that'll be a part of it.
That's awesome. And I do think that starting with Notebook is a good place to start because it really is pulling information from information that was already uploaded, which in theory should help eliminate halluciations. I just wanted to say that I agree with the elementary teachers. I think we should be very cautious in using this in elementary school. I don't think it's appropriate. I would even cautious us in, in middle schools. I do think that it's probably more appropriate for high schoolers, especially high schoolers that are getting ready for career in college because it's not going anywhere. People, we can be afraid of it all we want, but it's not going anywhere. It's going to continue to grow and we've got to stay ahead of it to ensure that, that we are creating a safe environment for our students. And the only other thing that I will say is that I know that a lot of teachers and others are really concerned about the human factor. I'm not as much concerned about the human factor because there's nothing like, there's nothing like an educator being in the room. nothing like an educator being in the room. There's noth, you cannot, AI cannot replace that human interaction. I actually ran into a tutor that my daughter had for the SAT. We were trying to get her SAT up so that she could get full Bright Futures, which she did do. And she tells me all the time, she goes, the strategies that he gave me and the confidence that he gave me is what made me get the score on the SAT that I did. And no amount of AI can give a child that. That takes a human connection to do so. So I'm thrilled that we're looking in this. I look forward to all the links that you're gonna send our way to make our jobs a little easier. I do think that there's a lot here that will, once educators get comfortable with it, I think they're going to be amazed at the burden and some of these task-oriented items that can be taken off their plate. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Gala. Vice, I'm sorry. Member Felder.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, Maurice, thank you so much for the presentation. And I noticed that when you, the part when you were inside and welcomed to our school, my little thank you cards, you generated that. So I appreciate that. But so let me just get to my thoughts. I don't trust AI. I don't like it at all, because my concern is that, not because I don't think that it's some of the wonderful things that AI provides for us, especially educators, but I don't know that we're going to be as cautious as we say that we're going to be to protect our students and our children in terms of when they communicate with Gemini. Now, what I did like about Gemini, man, sometimes I wish I was back in the classroom and then sometimes I don't. But if I could teach the Harlem, if this AI was around when I was teaching the Harlem Renaissance, oh, my God, I would love to have put myself in New York in the 1920s, right in Harlem and talking to Langston and talking to Honor Bo Thompson, letting the children hear the jazz. That would have been so wonderful, in my opinion. I think it is very helpful for teachers to visual, I'm a visual teacher and a visual learner. And I think AI in that perspective would be wonderful if I was teaching physiology and anatomy to get inside of a body, so the children could see. I mean, that, in that respect, is wonderful. But then, my concern is that, and you, and Board Member Gala talked about it, and I think you all have considered that fact, that you, as a teacher, we have to be cautious enough and understand when AI is taking over our thought process. Because it's smart, it's a computer, it's man-made. You know, my girl, my cousin works with AI. She's a film director in Atlanta, and her little avatar constantly tells her, don't do that. And she knows, she is trained, but it argues back with her. I say, we're talking to a computer, so what's wrong with you? So that's one of my concerns, that we have to be really on top of how we use it also. I'm in an agreement, but I know most of the board members said that nothing mechanical could ever take the place of human, the human touch, being able to talk and be able to work with children. My concern, again, I don't think it should be in elementary school, not from this perspective, unless you can do some kind of fantasy thing when you're teaching children smaller things, but for them to have to be taught exactly from this, I have some caution, because sometimes we get lazy and we won't go back and research and the AI is doing all the teaching. That I have a problem with. And as a teacher of English, a writing teacher, I don't know how we're going to deal. We say we got a plan to deal with plagiarism. I don't know. I'm not convinced that the plan is right, because it's so easy for students to go to ChatBT or go to Gemini, get a subject and a paper is written. And how many teachers, you got 125 students, 125 papers to check? You might not take out the time to see whether or not it was Gemini or whether the student is doing it. And then, this whole art of teaching, the pedagogy, the art of teaching, it, I don't want that to be lost. I want us to be advanced, and it's wonderful, but the whole, I do not want the pedagogy to get lost. And I think if we're not careful, it will get lost and children will not learn the mechanics of good writing, of critical thinking, they'll just go to Gemini. And I don't know whether or not we have in place the tools to combat that. I believe in advancement, I think it's needed, but there's something about the fact that at my age, I can remember when I learned how to read, when I understood comprehension. And if we rely too much on this and don't have something in place when the computer system goes into a glitch, because you know what happens in the county, happens all the time, what are we going to do? So I want us to be cautious of that. But I do want to applaud the fact that papers, grading papers, putting schedules together, indeed, that is a help. And counselors are just overwhelmed trying to put schedules together. Teachers are overwhelmed sometimes with grading papers and they may need that help. But I just want us, I don't want to repeat some of the same things that Member Gala said, but to say that, you know, if we're going to use, and I'm sure we are going to try to use it, because everybody seems to be all excited about it, we need to be cautious. And I'm going to keep coming back, as long as I'm on this board, because of my experience as a teacher for almost 40 years, I know what it means to have hands-on experiences in teaching children and they, and you watch them. When you teach the concept, not a computer, when you teach the concept and their eyes light up, and then you tell them to write or respond in writing what you understood that I said, and their, AI is not doing it. They are writing it. And that gives you such a grand satisfaction. My other concern is with the parents. Some of them are, you, we are always trying to reinvent ways to help parents understand, know what's going on. That parent, is, what is not parent, what is it called, a parent square? That's a wonderful thing that we're doing, but some parents are still having a hard time with that. They still can't navigate that. And so if we're going to teach, how are we going to get them to understand and how to navigate through that? That's a concern that I have as a board member, to make sure that they're having this. And then if they don't have a hotspot in their homes, how are they going to be able to navigate that? And then, how, do we have something in place, Maurice, that if a teacher is using the AI and maybe a super, a principal or administrator says that what has been done is incorrect, or if the AI gives the wrong answer, like that young man that committed suicide because AI told, how are we going to check that? You know what I'm saying? That is a concern to me, because whatever's on Google, somebody put it on now. Somebody, whether they got the correct information or not, you understand what I'm saying? So, and then AI will argue back with you. They'll tell you, no, no, no. They'll go back, back and forth with you. How are we going to combat that and deal with that? And I know we are all concerned about the security, Student Privacy Act with Children's Business and so forth. How do we have in place? And I, I'm not in a hurry. Would have a long time it takes to make sure that we have in place a way to control the security of the business of our children in this district and what they're going, you know, what they're dealing with. And I'm sure you're going to have something in place to help us as we deal with discipline. I just, you know, I just have real concerns and I'd probably be one of the skeptical, skeptical board members until, you're gonna have to, I'm like from Missouri, I'm from the show-me state. You have to show me exactly how this is going to work and what is the problem not going to be. So, but I, in closing, the presentation was wonderful. I almost wanted to run back somewhere and teach the Harlem Renaissance, so I can go back in that Gemini and be right there with Langston. Yes! So anyway, thank you for the presentation. But I'm the skeptical one, okay? And I'm gonna be that way for a minute.
No, that's incredibly helpful. We will provide definitely some additional feedback on the points you've made. I just did want to point, bring up one specific point with the support for parents. So I am working with Dr. Schuler and her office to provide some training for parents within the Parent Academy in the upcoming year, in the January, February time period, to make sure that we are also giving parents introduction and input to AI. And we're working on a parent survey also to get some parent feedback on AI uses from them.
If the information is incorrect, will the teacher have the ability to go in and correct the historical facts if they're teaching something? That's very important, because people put what they want to put on Google and tell you it's true. I know some of that service is a lie, it's a bold-faced lie. I know, because I lived it. So I just want to, teachers, if they're going to use it, they need to be able to correct information. But if it's done correctly, oh, my God. Can you imagine, you know, going back through that? And it would be wonderful if the kids could see it and understand it. But we have to monitor this beast that we're developing, because it is a beast. We got to monitor it. All right, thank you so much.
Member Douglas.
Yes, I think, you know, Member Felder just asked my question about the parents. That's mostly what was my concern, because if we want to create a guardrail around our kids at home, because it takes a village to raise a child, it's not only in the classroom, but it's also at home, to make sure that our parents are aware of what their children are doing and are knowledgeable in what the kids are doing on the computer and who they're talking with on the computer. It's very important. And also, you know, we went to a conference lately about AI. I'm not as scared of AI as I was, okay? Because they reassured me that it was a tool to help us, just like when we started with a calculator at the beginning. People did not like that. But at the end, we use a calculator. But what happened with a calculator, our kids don't do any memorization anymore. You know, they count on the calculator to do the work. And at this point, we're a little bit afraid that it went, it goes a little bit farther, that the kids will not think critically, they will just go to AI to do the work or to think for them. And we want to avoid that. So how can we use AI as a tool? Not as a first, as a go-to, but as a tool to help us to do things better. And also, we want to avoid hallucinations and biases in AI. So how do we do all that? So they, just like Member Felder, I'm a little bit cautious, because I do not want to lose our humanity. We want to keep that and use this as a tool to help us be better and to make it easier for our parents, our teachers to work in the classroom. It's great when you have something like that to do your lesson plan and help you with that, so you don't spend two or three hours trying to do a lesson plan. It's great, it's a tool. So that's my concern as well with the parents. If we can, just like you said, we, a tutorial for parents to help them to understand what AI is and how they can help the student from home, I think that would be really great. Thank you so much. And thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Member Douglas. Yeah, yeah. I, this is going to be so valuable from a teaching standpoint. I, I'm just struggling with the same thing that Member Felder and Douglas are, and I know there's not a thing we can do about it. And that is losing the skill set of good writing skills. Yeah, we had that same concern about calculators. And I do think we probably are not as good with math as we used to be because of our reliance on it. But I just, you know, I mean, I wish there was a way that we could know if our students are using AI for producing documents. And at some point, I looked at my AI expert next to me and you, I mean, is there going to be a point in the future where AI can detect AI? You know, like you use perplexity and it does a little of that, but.
There's some, I don't keep that smart.
Yeah, I, just, oh, you know.
So.
It's a skill set that I hate for, I know we're not going to lose our humanity. And I really do believe that human beings will generally differentiate, this is the early stage, but will differentiate and will still value face-to-face communication. But I just, the skill set of being able to write well. I mean, and maybe it's, I kind of like calculators, maybe it's not a skill set that we need so much, I don't know. I just, anyway, it's, I'm wanting you to answer the question, and I know that there's no answer. So I, sorry, I'm asking it again.
Well, what I will share is that one of the things that I've, that's really been very heartening to me in the, I've been contacted by several principals who've introduced me to teachers who are using AI with their, with their students. And every single teacher that I've spoken with, one of the things that they are making sure that their students understand is that they should be a critical partner of AI and that they should not just trust any output that is coming from AI. And that early education piece, all the teachers that I've spoken with so far, they realize that that is one of the key pieces. So they, one of the teachers, for example, they purposely pulled up an AI tool and they had the students ask, who's the President of the United States? And they knew it was the AI tool that did not have access to the internet, and so it did not give the right precedent. And so they, from the beginning of the lesson, introduced that you cannot just trust every output that you get from, from the tool. They are the ones that I've spoken with so far, then I think they're giving great baseline pieces that we can use as part of our trainings and our recommendations to teachers overall. They're talking about things such as, you do your own writing, but maybe you take the rubric that we've provided you and you ask AI to compare your writing to the rubric and to give you some suggestions there. So they are giving students practical ways to integrate it into their writing, but at the end of the day, they're saying, I know you, I know how you talk. I know the words that you use. And when you come back with a writing, yes, I could probably get some tool, but to be honest with you, I can tell this just doesn't sound like you.
Right.
It's not something that you would ever say. The sentences are not in a, in a pathway that you've ever used. Are there some tools that we have in place now? Because, for example, we, today, even before AI, and even before AI, we had situations where we wanted students to express their thought and want to make sure they were not using any tools around them. And so we do have tools that we use today where we can ask a student to go in to complete an assignment and they can't use any other resources. So I think there are things at that that we can, that we can use.
You know, thank you. I think that is a part of, a part of the strategy. So a couple of things that you just said, you mentioned that one teacher, a couple of teachers were, you know, instructing students on what to look out for and the shortcomings. So I think if that is built into part of the curriculum that we use with AI, I think instead of some teachers doing it and some not, I just think that being incorporated is going to be important. But then I also like the idea that there's a certain amount of, you're going to write a paper and you're going to write it in the classroom and you're not going to have use of your tablet. You know, so that we have some checks and balances in there and there's an incentive and a motivation by students to realize, I still have to have that skill set. So I mean, I find it really, really helpful for proofreading a document, or sometimes it's like, okay, I probably could have said that more clearly, but here's, here's what I want to say, but how can I make that more concise? And it's extremely valuable for that, but that's entirely different than saying, I need a report on XYZ and print it. So anyway, I would just really like for us to think about those measures that we keep in place, so that there is accountability to learn basic skills like writing. Is Dr. Vasquez?
So I hear the concerns.
Yeah.
I believe that the tool is something that our children have already grasped and are using very well. And if our teachers and our staff do not. Do not become aware of how to use the tool Appropriately, that we're gonna have a huge gap. Um I I do hear the concerns personally. You know, we heard, I think it was a speaker of FSBA that was talking about All this technology that's happened, and in all these years, there's only one job that's been eliminated. And that's an elevator operator. All the other jobs still exist. And so I understand the angst because it's something that's new. But we have always had situations where we know children didn't necessarily do the work. I remember being a teacher, having projects Come and I could clearly tell the child did not do the project. This was a family project. And so For our teachers, they first of all need to feel comfortable in using the tools. And for some of them, they are. They they're doing a phenomenal job. For others, this is not something that we're gonna require them to do. We want them to feel that this is a tool that can help them Not not hinder them. And if they're not comfortable with it, we want to be able to give them the space to learn it. Uh I've personally interacted with Commingo. I've seen students that interact with Commingo. Um I think it's one of the best platforms because it prompts you with questions. It does not just create. Uh I need a five paragraph essay on the topic, you know, of the American Revolution with seven citation. It does not just produce it. It asks you questions. It it's teaching you through the prompts. And I think that's what we have to look for. We have to carefully identify the AI tools that we are using, working with, you know, our our teachers to see What is working, what's not, and how it could complement their learning. Um and so I I think there's just two camps out there. There's teachers that see that this is a tool that is going to help them learn. And I do think that you do learn as you are getting information from the the agent or the or the chatbot because you're 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 seeing Writing and you are seeing the the words that are being used. And so there is some learning that is taking place. So we're we're gonna proceed with some caution, but I don't think we can be too slow because the the students are using it. Other school districts, universities are using it and they are um finding ways to do it in a manner that Is ethical. And they are also working around some of the challenges that you've mentioned. But we've all, I mean, we've always had that where children are producing work. And I know of some that even with, is it turnitin.com? I think. Were we they it goes in, teachers put in the essay, and I've had students that have shared, yeah, I didn't write it. You know, I had somebody else that helped me with it. So.
So Superintendent, um what I was asking about, not was whether our teachers should be using it. But whether there are some one should part of what we're teaching our kids is To be skeptical, to recognize the shortcomings as opposed to just.
Correct.
Okay, so that was one point I made. The other point was That if a certain if A certain amount of writing that you're doing for a class is required to be done in the classroom without the use of a tablet. Then you are kind of reinforcing that you are going to have to be able to write by yourself. This is a tool. But if you're going to use that tool exclusively, then when you take this test, which requires you to write it right now, you're going to fail. So that's all that was all my comment was is that if we could build that into Curriculum of some sort that just requires the student, for instance, um when we're teaching You know, addition, subtraction, we are not giving those kids calculators in the classroom to do that math. We're actually teaching them Two plus two is four. I mean, at some point, they're using a calculator, but they are learning two plus two is four. And so I think based, you know, some of the things that I'm hearing is, and what I'm afraid of is just losing the ability to write. And I don't think I kind of felt like we have to lose that, but I actually don't think we have to lose that as long as we require that As some portion of the material that they produce in language arts.
No, and I agree with you, and I'm gonna go to your example. Um and
And am I wrong? Because now we really don't teach them.
I'm just gonna give you an example. So there are children that learn their multiplication tables and do great. They may not understand the concept, but they've memorized them. But if you have not mastered your multiplication tables, you're gonna have a heck of a time with fractions. You're gonna have a heck of a time with decimals. So
Yes.
Do you hold back a child because they don't know their times table? Or do you allow them to have a tool that has what the multiplication tables are? And they're learning the concept of how do you reduce fractions? How do you multiply fractions? And so in some cases, if we are waiting for children to master their multiplication tables, and sadly, we see it in some of our algebra classes. Uh they're never gonna progress. And so I think that's how we have to look at some of these tools Or how we need to look at some of these new technologies. How can they help our our children? How can they help our employees to do their jobs more efficiently? And learn from them as opposed to let them do the work for you. And I I do think that with our teachers And our our trainings with them and and learning from them, how they are using it, how they are having the children understand How how important it is for them to be doing the work, because when you take the test, if you've let the AI tool do all the work, you're not gonna pass. And so I think that is something that we are very cognizant of, especially at the middle and high school. There is a lot of concern around That how much of of reliance do they have on the artificial intelligence tool versus um them actually knowing what's been taught?
Alright, alright, thank you. Um Member Douglas. Oh, I'm sorry. You know what happened? Yeah, you didn't clear and I didn't clear. So there we go. Member Ferrante.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Maurice, for great presentation. Um I won't prolong this. I think we've kind of gone over everything a lot, but Just my own thoughts, it's cautiously optimistic. I think there's a lot of things that um all of us have Statements that have been made that are great and uh thought provoking. I love it as a tool, as you were saying, um something where A teacher or board members like ourselves can go in, look for something, uh and it pops up uh for like a policy for us. Super helpful. It's time, um you know. Saves us time. Uh but I am, I I would just want to make sure that whatever, uh if, you know, we create a policy around this, that we just make sure that Obviously, education is the focus, so making sure that kids are learning how to write that paragraph. And maybe then using AI as a tool of, okay, what are some other ways? Do you see how? For instance, when you type into ChatGPT, if you type in a nice paragraph, and then it gives you three different options and three ways to um say it. So you could use that as maybe a a tool, a teacher could use that to use that as a tool to say See how there's other ways that you could reword this and really kind of helping the the kids to expand their minds. Because, as was mentioned, if they don't have their their laptops with them or um whatnot, it's you just want to be able I I want kids to be leaving our schools with the knowledge in their minds, not at their fingertips, just running to ChatGPT. Um I think even a lot of us, I know for myself, I'm starting to spot when people have used ChatDBD and just copied and pasted and threw it in there. Um it's one thing to take a little section or a blurb from it, like, oh, I like that sentence, but I'll use the rest of my own. So I I think as this progresses, it reminds me of the internet when like back in the day, I guess I was kind of young. I don't know, late teens when internet came out. But there was a lot of skepticism and what will this be? And so taking over the world. So I think just being cautious, just like with the internet, there's goods and bads. And so uh same thing with this, there's goods and bads. I really hope it could be an awesome tool for Our teachers, administrators, um making schedules, that type of thing. So thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Member Ferrante. Member Salem, Vice Chair.
Thank you so much, Chair. Uh Maurice, one of the questions I had was About like the training that we're thinking of doing about data privacy, security and Kind of our policy on uploading, call it internal material and external sources. And like, you know, is that part of the conversation we're gonna have on policy? Is it something that's being addressed by some of our blocks? But I mean, everybody goes home and is in their own internet and they have their own account, so.
Yeah, it is definitely one of the areas that is going to be a key part of the training because that is one of the That's one of the main concerns that I have when we talk about AI overall is that um We have a We have this this chicken and egg piece where we want to make sure we're responsibly giving teachers access to AI tools. We know teachers are using AI tools, and sometimes the tools that they are using. If those tools are not tools that we have vetted or that we've made sure that they are not using our data, we know that they are using our data. And so I think there is much more education that we need to do around making sure that Teachers and students understand the transaction that is taking place if you're using a public tool to Ask it and give you give your information in and what they're gonna do with that information. So that's going to definitely be part of the training that we are providing and part of the policy discussion overall around um around AI policy.
Yeah. Uh I mean, obviously, I'm I'm personally very uh excited about AI and see a lot of the potential that is there. Um I'm also very aware of where things go wrong. Uh I would say my biggest concern with AI and something that I will be very outspoken for as we draft policy Is majority of these AI tools, whether it's the normal ChatGPT or call it Claude or or why not. If you're not using the enterprise version of these tools, call it the OCPS version or whatever you use at work. Anything you feed it goes into the big machine, right? And so by default, anything that you at home do and upload Gets turned on into the memory, because memories usually automatically turned on, and any information you submit to it is now basically public domain. So let's give the example of if a teacher goes off of OCPS enterprise AI And goes home and uploads student records for an IP or student records for healthcare or performance. Those student records are now public domain. Any person out there that searches this or specifics about them anywhere in the world Will have access to this if they know how to ask it. I think this is incredibly risky and I want to make sure, I know we're not Going to be enforcing training on how to use it in the classroom, but I do feel strongly on Having every staff member understand that if, I mean, we we have laws against leaking student data and information. And of course, AI makes it much easier to do an IP, much easier. That that we know. But if a teacher takes that and uploads it somewhere else and that's students' information, I know if it's my kids, I wouldn't be happy about that. Is now suddenly in the public domain forever, right? Like we You know, I grew up in the social media era where it was like, never take a picture with you in a red cup and post it on Facebook because it's gonna be there forever. This is so much worse than that because any person that uploads any information about you, whether it's your teacher, your doctor, your psychologist. I mean, any person out there who has information about you and uploads it into a non-enterprise AI. It's fair game for the rest of folks out there if they know how to look for it. So to the, there's like the, how do we incentivize responsible use is an important conversation to have. But also, like, the risk part of it, I think is really serious. Um and I think folks are just starting to see how Much out of control it is, right? This like every Fortune 500 company has had that issue because Some employee uploads IP information at Goldman Sachs, at Google, that they weren't uploaded, and suddenly, if you go search for it, it shows up. And that that was not possible before. Obviously, you could upload it, but it's really hard to find those things if you just go on google.com. And so that's that's one of the things that I would say, the privacy and the implications and perhaps The consequences of something like that I want us to take really seriously in our policy, uh because it is something that is going to really hurt us. Not just OCPS, but every organization long term. Um and I would say that the average person, like if you look at the average person's Usage of AI, one of the biggest things they use it for is healthcare. People upload their lab results onto ChatGPT. They upload All kinds of stuff on there because they get answers and they can chat with someone. And I just, there's a lot of reasons why it's incredibly helpful. That doesn't mean they should. And so that is happening. And as folks outside of a work setting get used to using these tools In a very informal way Without being taught how to use them responsibly. They're gonna keep using it whatever way they think is this is helpful, this is easy, this is efficient, this makes my life easier. And so the I I think there's a discussion to be had on what is enforced in training and what isn't, because some of this stuff is really high stakes. Of course, like, how do we Do this in curriculum or all this stuff? Like, that's a little different, and I would I wouldn't want to force that on on folks, but I think on the student data safety and privacy, I would I would definitely Probably be more open to do a bit more of um mandatory type of training, uh because it's just I don't think people would be happy if suddenly a lot of our student records are out there. So that's one. I I think too, some of the questions that folks brought up and and there's a lot of Complicated technical answers to this, but it is mathematically impossible for AI not to hallucinate. And like the, I'm gonna butcher this, but this is like the one on one version of why it's mathematically impossible for AI not to do it. The early parts of what was computation and what we all grew up with with our computers was everything was zero or one, right? If you remember, like, the coding of a computer was like zero, one, zero, one. It was a bunch of stuff, right? And the reason behind that was because all programming was based on logic. It's like if this, then the Everything was binary. It was a zero or a one or some combination of a rule based system. And that's kind of the technology we grew up with. One of the biggest limitations that AI always had was the world is not so structured. And in order for us to do AI, we have to change away from this logic kind of language into what is called natural language processing. And natural language processing means that you have to take in everything that makes natural language into account. So natural language being When I say the sentence, I saw the man with the telescope, that's natural language, right? We can say that. Or, you know, it's Like, there's some like sayings that are, you know, that we know what that means, right? But but like, I saw the man with a telescope can mean two things, right? Did I see the man with the telescope or was there a man with a telescope? That's natural language. It's messy. It's confusing. It depends on grammar and the terms and interpretation. Everything AI is built around is natural language and how like humans actually communicate, interact. And when you think about every weird acronym or natural language usage, or even how Shakespeare uses, you know, analogies, like The things that make language messy, all of that is now the natural language processing that AI uses. And so what it basically just tries to do is when you ask it a question and it's answering, it tries to be correct And give you a correct answer, but it's pulling from natural language. And so if that answer is in a messy way constructed out there in the world, it's gonna give you hallucinations. It's gonna basically, its job is to fill the gap of what it doesn't have. And so mathematically, truly impossible for hallucinations not to be part of this technology. At the same time, what makes it so human and interactive is because of how it's structured. You you can talk to it. It's like the first time, like, none of us have to learn how to code because we can just ask this thing all these questions that before We would have been able to code and we wouldn't have been able to do it. And so There are parts of this technology that are fundamentally gonna change things about how we engage with it. I'm very excited for us to look into this for operational purposes, administrative purposes. AI is really good in problems that are very structured. So something like we know the structure of an answer or such an an IP. Now we just have to fill it out and we don't have to do it over and over again, right? Like, so structured problems, AI is really good. So administrative, operationals, all that stuff. AI is not good with open ended questions about history, about English, about critical thinking on certain topics, right? It it gets. It, it gets seventy percent of the way, they're in a high-quality way. But the last twenty to thirty percent is really difficult. And so I do think long-term, one of the skillsets that our students are gonna need most, it's gonna be the skill discernment, being able to tell what is what, what is human, what makes sense, what doesn't make sense, what is logical. Um, and that's a really higher level of thinking required uh, for what the world with AI will be. And we just, I think we have to stick to what we do with our strategic plan of, there are human skills that our students need to have to succeed in the future. And they're sometimes gonna be beyond just the math and the calculator and the reading of certain things. And so I think like that's, that's a, a lot of where we as educators and, and policy leaders have to think about. I don't think it's going away, I think people love it. I think people are learning workflows and usage outside of formal workplace environments, and I do think that's dangerous. So I do worry about either being skeptical of it, of letting them learn the best use from like informal networks, informal life out there. Uh, because there's a lot, I mean, and these companies are benefiting from the amount of information that people are uploading and giving them every single day. Um, and so that's, that's part of, of what is making all of this work. Uh, it is like a data-hungry monster, what these AI companies are. It is, it, it, it has consumed so much information about the world. Um, and so yeah, those, those are my things, thank you for leading this, we'll continue to work together. There's some really big philosophical questions involved in everything with AI. Um, but I do think it's important for our staff, our teachers to understand the implications of it because it is way above and beyond the black and white. I think some previous technologies were a little bit more straightforward than what AI is. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Salamanca. I, I have one question for you though, um, or maybe it's for both of you. I'm sorry, I'll come back.
Oh, no, no, you're good, sorry, I, I accidentally.
Oh, okay, so in terms of it taking in the information that we put in, my understanding was it's not taking it in like real time. I mean, it, it's taking it in, but until like the next version comes out, that information, I don't know, say I put out, well, I, I, I don't know, I put out some factoid that I made up or only I know, that it's not gonna incorporate that into its database and then use that for future input to somebody else until like another version of whatever, chat GPT, for instance. Do either one even know what I'm talking about? Like, I mean, there's a difference between I, I put something in and it's immediately available to you. And sometimes I think people think that, but I don't really think that's quite the way it works. It's not immediately available, it has to be updated.
I don't know if there's a clean answer to that question, just because.
Well, hang on, I'll ask AI.
There, I, you know, when we talk about the speed at which, which AI has, has just improved and increased, you have where when AI first came out and that, that example I gave of the teacher who could say who is the President of the United States, a lot of the first initial AI systems, they had no connection to the internet or to external resources or databases that they could leverage and say beyond my initial training, what other information is there available to help me answer this question?
Right.
And so I think that's the area we start going into now. When you are, if someone is putting information into systems that can leverage that information for training, um, the, many of these systems, if you go in there and you ask them a question about something that is in the news, they'll be able to give you updated information.
That's true.
Because they're doing updated scanning, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, you're concerned that students' information. Yeah, I mean, it, no, no matter what, we ought to assume that can happen and prevent it from happening. It was just, I'm just, Member Vanos, thank you all, Member Vanos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate your presentation, it was very thorough. I appreciate the cautious approach that we have taken so far as a district and I really appreciate all of the comments that everybody made. Um, I mean, I think for me to summarize, I think I want to be, I would want us to be very, very proactive on educating our entire OCPS community about AI. And, um, but I have a lot of skepticism about um, just the, the impact on, again, points raised on, on critical thinking. I will say it seems like it is a great, a great use of AI is administrative tasks. A great use of AI seems to be compiling, you know, um, policies and, you know, information in the public domain and making it in a, um, making it searchable so that we can find quick answers. So I, I understand that piece of it. But I, I did not see really a lot in the presentation about the impacts on, on, you know, the cognitive abilities of, of students. And I think that there is research out there that the more dependent that a, a student becomes on AI, um, that it does impact their ability to critically think and um, and really um, be, what's the word? Not resilient, but um, will be persistent, you know, that, that persistence, that piece right there. Um, and you know, I, I know some people have made the comment that AI is like a calculator, but I mean, a calculator is, is not factually wrong, it doesn't have mental health risks. Um, it, it doesn't, um, it doesn't have misinformation or propaganda and it's not addictive. So it's not really like a calculator. And, you know, people talk about it like, you know, it was mentioned that it's kind of like conversations about the internet and is reminiscent about those conversations. But I wouldn't say that having the internet has made us necessarily more deeply knowledgeable or even necessarily more of us feeling like we have more time. Um, so I think we need to really think about what we're trying to get out of this and, and what, what makes sense. Um, I do worry about the monitoring piece, um, because I don't, I think right now in our schools, honestly, we're, we're not always doing a great job of monitor, monitoring our kids online. So I don't know how we're, think we're going to monitor them using AI. And I, I worry about, you know, now, well, we have programs to detect AI and it's like we're giving so much time and resource into something that's supposed to be saving us time. I, I, I really, I, I worry about that. I um, like uh, Chair Jacobs' thought about, you know, we can't control what students are doing outside of the classroom. We can educate them on what AI could be used for and I know there's some great study opportunities for, for AI outside of the classroom. But I, I agree that when they are in a class, I think, you know, to the extent we have secure browser locks and they can be on a screen or they're using paper and pencil to show what they know. Because I have heard parents, you know, tell me and um, and professional, you know, providers, doctors in our community that students are coming to them, they've used AI all through the year and then they get to the end of the year and they, they do poorly on the test. So it's, you know, I, again, I think we're, we're looking at not a calculator, we're looking at cell phones, which we banned. So again, I think there's a use in terms of administrative tasks, but I, I, I think we just need to be really careful from that learning and, uh, perspective. Not to mention what Member Salamanca brought up about just the um, ease of making our students and employees', you know, records public. So I would just say I, I appreciate the um, I appreciate the thoughtfulness and the care that has gone into this discussion. And uh, I, again, I'm, I'm very skeptical of how we use this in ways beyond administrative tasks. Uh, and I do want to make sure that no matter what, we are educating our students on proper ways to use AI and making sure that we are assessing them uh, without, without access to it. So thank you.
All right, that was a nice short conversation. Thank you so much. Um, I, yeah, I would love, I, I'm sure most of us would love to have access to um, those, say access sounds like you wouldn't give us, but the videos you were talking about.
Yeah. We, we'll do that and we'll um, we will definitely um, include the board's um, thoughts and ideas as we put together the draft policy.
Right.
Uh, and I, I, I clearly understand the, the concerns that you have voiced and so we'll, we'll be able to bring that to you sometime in the next maybe two months.
Great, awesome, thank you. All right, uh. Yeah, it's hard to believe that there's um, public hearings have to be had. Do we have um, Mr. Palmieri, do we have any public comments? No?
No.
Okay, great, all right. So we are on public hearing three point oh one, request approval for the targeted rezoning involving Robinswood Middle School and Okowi Middle School to commence school year twenty-six?
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, it's, uh, staff is ready to present on all three of the targeted rezonings. So we will turn it over to uh, Mr. Greg Moody, uh, Executive Leader for School Choice.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Superintendent, School Board, Chair. It's always a pleasure, pleasure to be before you. Uh, this evening we bring uh, three targeted rezonings. I'll ask uh, uh, Stacy Neal, Director's uh, uh, she just got a promotion, so uh, uh. Senior Director.
You can't remember what her title is, but.
It's been a long night, it's been a long night. Enjoyable night, but very long, let me just add. Senior Director of Student Enrollment, so uh, she'll walk us through real briefly for the viewing public's uh, pleasure, some background knowledge, some background on the rezone process and then we'll get into three point oh one, Stacy Neal.
Okay.
Good evening, Dr. Vasquez, Chair Jacobs, Board Members, OCPS staff and everyone else who's out there listening or getting ready for bed.
Ready to go to bed? Did you say everybody else as in YouTube?
Everybody else. Okay, so tonight we'll present the three targeted school rezoning proposals, each supported by maps and demographic data to illustrate potential impacts on students, families and schools. Um, so first I wanted to remind everyone of the rezoning timeline. We had our community meeting October eighth at six PM here in the RBELC. Um, we had a work session October twenty-first at nine AM and school board rule development on November sixth at four thirty and we're here tonight uh, for our public hearing. The rezoning process follows school board policy JC, which is we commence meeting or we speak with the superintendent to commence rezoning. The timeline that I just mentioned is developed. We, we meet with principals, executive leaders and school board members. We have research and data that we collect. The community meetings, rule development workshop, public hearing and our rezoning notebook. We have three different types of rezonings to just go over real quick. Technical uh, rezonings are generally uninhabited property and no students are involved. Targeted rezonings, which we're here for tonight, affect small areas and limited number of students. Relief schools are when we open new schools and affect a large area and a large number of students. School zone boundaries, we have influencing factors or criteria that we take into account when we're rezoning. We look at feeder-school alignment to ensure continuity from elementary to middle to high. We look at neighborhoods, we don't like to split neighborhoods, so we keep neighborhoods intact where possible to maintain, maintain community cohesion. And we look at future development in the area such as housing, population growth trends. Demographic balance to promote equitable distribution of students and the capacity utilization, so we match school capacity with the projected student enrollment. We look, also take in consideration distance, transportation access or, you know, how accessible transportation is. And we prioritize proximity to reduce travel time and costs for buses while maximizing safe walkability. We will also take in consideration road and natural infrastructure. The rezoning process can be complex and works to balance all educational, logistical and community factors. We also want to mention, we've transitioned from permanent program capacity, which was known as PPC, to permanent FISH capacity. Permanent FISH, which is, stands for, FISH stands for Florida Inventory of School Houses um, as named by the Florida Department of Education. And this is the official student capacity assigned to a school determined by the state and maintained by district staff. Recorded, it is recorded in the Florida Inventory of School Houses and this uh, permanent FISH capacity does exclude portables. Permanent program capacity was an OCPS um, uh, phrase or term that we use with counting or determining capacity. It reflected actual, actual instructional capacity, offered flexibility in classroom space usage and helped meet class size amendment requirements. So on to rezoning, you may find our rezoning process on the OCPS website. Um, you will go to www.octps.net, schools, schools, school rezonings. And from there you can see our rezonings that are currently in the works and any previous board-approved rezonings. When rezoning, we do take in consideration students um, who are at a school and can be grandfathered. So the grandfather transfer is available for a student who has been rezoned by OCPS two or more times during a school level, so K through five, six through eight, nine through twelve. And as long as they are, have lived at the current address. For a student who has, another criteria is for a student who has been rezoned from an established school to another established school. In this case, the student may remain at the existing school instead of being assigned to the rezoned school. For a student who will be in the fifth or eighth grade and will be rezoned to a new relief elementary or middle school, they may remain at their current school. The following shall also apply to grandfather transfers. Transportation is not provided by OCPS. Siblings shall be eligible to transfer with a student who has granted the grandfather transfer. And the deadline for all grandfather transfers during this period is April thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. On to the rezonings, the first rezoning or targeted rezoning is Okowi Middle School and Robinswood Middle School. Currently, these students feed into Robinswood Middle School. I'm sorry, the first proposal addresses rezoning between Okowi Middle School and Robinswood Middle School to create a consistent feeder pattern for students zoned to Citrus Elementary. Currently, these students feed into Robinswood Middle School and Okowi High School. If approved, the entire Citrus Elementary school zone will feed into Okowi Middle School and Okowi High School, benefiting forty-eight middle school students. Let's review the map. Green lines indicate existing middle school zones. The hash section, the hash section marks the area to be rezoned. Purple represents the proposed Okowi Middle School zone and green represents Robinswood Middle School. Here is a zoomed-in view of the area. The next slide represents demographic overview of the rezoning. The first column shows the name of the school involved in the rezoning with the school's Florida Inventory of School Houses capacity, FISH. Permanent FISH capacity refers to the official number of students a school is designated to accommodate as determined by the state. This figure is maintained by district staff in the Florida Inventory of School Houses, a comprehensive database that includes every room in all district-owned schools. Um, Okowi Middle School with one thousand two hundred and sixty-one capacity, twelve sixty-one, and Robinswood with nine hundred and sixty-six. The next column displays student enrollment captured on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four The next column displays student enrollment captured on October 15th, 2024, with a percent breakdown for race, ethnicity, white, black, and other, and non-Hispanic, Hispanic. For Okowi, there's 1,158 enrollment. Forty-nine percent white, forty-two percent black, and nine percent other, 61% non-Hispanic, and 39% Hispanic. Robinswood has 985 enrollment, 8% white, 89% black, 3% other, 90% non-Hispanic, and 10% Hispanic. The third column shows enrollment on October 1st, 2025. Okowi Middle School has 1,152, and Robinswood Middle School with 841. The fourth column displays current number of students residing in each zone. There are 1,488 students in the Okowi Zone and 1,407 in Robinswood Zone. The next column shows how many students will be residing in each zone if this rezoning takes place. 1,536 students for Okowi Middle School with 53% white, 38% black, and 9% other, 60% non-Hispanic, and 40% Hispanic. The projected numbers of students attending Okowi in 2026 will be between 1,150 students, well, 1,150 and 1,170 students. For Robinswood, the numbers are as follows. 1,359 students with 13% white, 83% black, and 4% other, 87% non-Hispanic, and 13% Hispanic. There are between 860 to 880 students projected to attend Robinswood in August of 2026 if this rezoning takes place. The next column is FARMs, standing for Free and Reduced Meals. The current percent for Okowi is 45, and proposed is 46. For Robinswood, 65% current and proposed. ESE, which stands for Exceptional Student Education, is 11% for current and proposed for Okowi, and 12% for Robinswood. ELL is the next column, which stands for English Language Learners, and 9% current and proposed for Okowi, 21% for Robinswood. I will give you a moment to review the numbers. Oh, 12%. Sorry, that Lexia kicks in. Sorry. Please take a moment to review the data and consider the potential benefits of this alignment. No additional community input was received since the Rule Development Workshop on November 6th. If approved, this rezoning will commence August of 2026. Dr. Vasquez.
Thank you, Stacy. Board Members, we've reviewed this, we've had work sessions on it. At this time, we are looking for a motion to move forward with the targeted rezoning.
So, moved by Member Gallo, seconded by Member Vanos. Do everybody in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, that passes, the motion passes.
Okay, so, Stacy, and I'm going to ask the Board's approval of this. Since we've reviewed the charts, if, when you get to the data chart, if you'll just give them a moment to review it, and that way, I'm looking at the time.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Now, moving on to 3.02. Dr. Vasquez.
Stacy will now present to you the targeted rezoning for Chain of Lakes Middle School and Carver Middle School.
So, the green lines, once again, represent the existing middle schools. The hashed section is the targeted area to be rezoned. Purple represents the proposed Chain of Lakes Middle School Zone, and green represents Carver's Middle School Zone. This rezoning will move 32 students from Chain of Lakes to Carver Middle School, aligning the feeder pattern for Eccleston Elementary School, and reducing travel distance from approximately six miles to 2.4 miles, or 2.5 miles or less. The zoomed-in view of the adjacent, area adjacent to Carver Middle School, the next slide represents demographic overview of the rezoning. Please take a moment to review the numbers. There was no additional feedback received since the Rule Development Workshop on November 6th. If approved, this rezoning will commence August of 2026. Dr. Vasquez.
Thank you, Members of the Board. If you have any questions or comments, if not, we're looking for approval of this targeted rezoning.
So, moved by Member Ferrand? Second by Member Gallo. All those in favor, say aye?
Yeah, aye.
Opposed? Motion is passed. One question, we don't have anyone speaking to it either. Sorry, John. Okay, making sure.
Our third and final targeted rezoning involves Cypress Creek High School and Lake Nona High School.
Our last rezoning for today involves Cypress Creek and Lake Nona High School. This proposal aims to realign the feeder pattern for middle and high school students, currently zoned for Luminary Middle School and Cypress Creek High School. If approved, this change will fully align the Luminary Middle School Zone with Lake Nona High School. There are currently 136 high school students residing in the targeted area. Real quick, let's review. Blue lines represent current high school boundaries. The hashed section marks the targeted area for rezoning. Purple indicates the proposed zone for the Cypress Creek High School, and green for Lake Nona. Zoomed-in version, or view of the area. And the data table, please take a moment to review. Since Rule Development Workshop on November 6th, we received one additional input from the community supporting this rezoning. If approved, this rezoning will commence August of 2026. Dr. Vasquez.
Thank you, Stacy and team. If there's any comments, if not, we are also seeking approval for this targeted rezoning.
Has anyone come to this meeting to speak to this item? Okay, so now, we'll open the floor. So, moved by Member Ferrand? Second, myself. So, Member Salma is the second. Okay, thank you. Is there anything else on that? Oh, all those in favor, sorry?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion was. All right, before we move on to the approval of the consent agenda, I would like to turn it over to Board Member Gallo, who will read the proposed resolution listed under the Consent Item 4.01. The resolution opposing efforts to lower the minimum age for long gun purchase and carry below 21.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is my pleasure to read this resolution tonight, that all the Board Members will be signing at the conclusion. Whereas, in 2018, the Florida Legislature raised the age of purchasing long guns from 18 to 21 with Marjory Stoneman Douglas Act after the horrific school mass shooting at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. And whereas, the safety and well-being of students, staff, and the community are paramount to the mission of Orange County Public Schools. And whereas, proposed legislation in the state of Florida, in-house Bill 133 seeks to return the minimum age for purchasing and carrying long guns to 18 years. And whereas, research and public safety data indicate that reducing age restriction for firearm purchases may increase risk of gun-related injuries and fatalities among youth and in the school environment. And whereas, the School Board of Orange County recognized its responsibility to advocate for policies that protect students and maintain secure learning environments. And whereas, the Board supports measures that prioritize responsible gun ownership and community safety over expanded access to firearms for individuals under 21 years of age. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Orange County formally opposes any legislation that would permit individuals under the age of 21 to purchase or carry long guns in the state of Florida, and be it further resolved that the Board urges state lawmakers to maintain current age restrictions and to consider additional measures that enhance school and community safety. And be it finally resolved that copies of this resolution will be transmitted to members of the Florida Legislature and other relevant stakeholders, adopted by the School Board of Orange County, Florida, in Orlando, Florida, on this ninth day of December 2025. Thank you.
Do we have a motion? Do we already vote on the resolution?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was part of the consent agenda. Thank you, you were just reading it into the record. Thank you very much, okay. So, we have done the consent agenda?
No, I was reading it prior to the.
Thank you. Thank you. That's much better. Thank you. I had this whole conversation the other day about the, yeah, about the script, that we need to read that first, so, thank you. So, now, we're ready to vote on the consent agenda? Is there a motion? Motion by Member Gallo, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Douglas. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Having stepped away for just a minute, do, have we completed the agenda, or do we still have the item that was pulled? Right? I don't remember what number it was on the.
It was 4.04, moved to 17.01.
Okay, so, we are on 17.01. All right. Member Ferrand, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just really, I wanted to pull this because I feel like we need to really talk about this initiative with CASA. The, when I'm out in the community, I've had many parents asking me about this initiative, as well as even just, like, business owners, people who are in tune with what is happening within the school system. And when you look at, okay, so if we get roughly around $9,000, like, from the state to educate a child, and then we use a company like CASA to come in, and they take $935 for a student, if they are able to get that student back into our schools, but only for at least 30 days, 10% of the funds then are going to a company. Now, I know we've discussed with Scott Howitt and the team, and what I've been told is that it's astronomical if we were to do this in-house. However, I do feel that our schools really could be marketing themselves in a way, if there's a way that we could be, I know it, I've heard the idea floated, but if there's a way that we could even give it a bonus to somebody that is able to bring a student back, that motivates people to reach out to friends and talk to people and get, get people back into the system, and it benefits our own staff rather than going out to another company. I just, I have a lot of angst with this. I think we need to be more frugal with the funding, and I don't feel super confident with the data that have been given. We've been told that we've, that we've retrieved or brought back, what is it now, 1,900 students through CASA, but has it, was it, has that been verified? Was it actually through CASA? Because about a month ago, we were told it was around 1,200. So, now, CASA's really brought in that much more in just that last month? I mean, those are kind of questions that I have.
Sure. And I'm just going to respond briefly, and then I'm going to have Adrian, or we have representative from CASA, will speak. So, we have been recruiting for the last couple of years. Our schools have attempted to tell their story and have families come. The benefit that we saw with CASA is that they are experts at recruiting. They have a team, I believe, of over 40 individuals that are specifically working with Orange County, and they can speak to their, I'll use the word, aggressive efforts. And the, we, I personally was hopeful that we would have maybe 500 students that would be recovered, but we actually recovered approximately 1,900. And that translated to over 13 million in FTE, and we paid out a little bit over 1.8 million. Now, we're tracking that to be able to see, how long have they stayed? We've also, I've been working with our principals, that these are new families, so what are, how are we making them part of the school community? How are we continuing to make sure that we're meeting their needs? Additionally, CASA has provided some incredible customer service training, which we have seen the impact of that. We've gone to a couple of schools, and you walk in, and they have, I'm trying to think, when you come in, you can see a warm environment, but you can also smell a warm environment, right? Yeah, I mean, it's really incredible friendly staff, and so they all, the ones that I have been to, they have attributed that to the training that they received, that was very powerful. We did, I think, three different sessions, and we have talked about, well, can we, I'm sorry, five, thank you, Adrian. We have talked about, well, could we take this on? We don't believe, number one, we have the personnel. Number two, it takes startup, so we're going to have to train people. All the while, we're still seeing families are choosing non-traditional public schools. And so, as a cabinet, we've discussed it, we've spoken with our principals, and we believe that this is worth another investment in those. Dollars, at least for another year, so that we can truly see, have we, you know, stemmed that tide? I have talked to some of the other superintendents that have used CASA, and we actually have some others in Florida that are now actually going to use them because of what we have been able to see. I have not had comments from the community about the cost. In fact, what we did hear from some of the charters is that they thought that we were being too aggressive with, you know, recruiting. In fact, their attorney sent a letter to DOE claiming that we had violated FERPA, which we had not, and we were able to gain back many more families than I ever thought. But I'm going to, Scott, if you will introduce him, and that way, they can really explain their system, and it is an aggressive campaign where they are making phone calls, they're visiting pre-CAS centers, it's quite an operation.
Thank you, Dr. Vasquez. Sure, I'm happy to introduce Adrian Bond, who's the President of CASA-K-12, and Paige Walkup, who's President of CASA-K-12 Strategy, Public Strategy. So, I'll turn it over to Adrian at this time.
Yes, okay. Chair, Board Members, Superintendent, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm Adrian Bond, the President of CASA-K-12, and we've had the opportunity to partner with OCPS, and it's been a great success. Superintendent, you mentioned 500. I was hoping we were just going to get about 500, but what we quickly realized is, you all have so much to be proud of as a district. The fact that this is not happening all the time is just a testament to what the competition is doing. You know, as we're sitting here right now, I can assure you, there are families, some of your families being called and being asked to come to their schools next year. of your families being called and being asked to come to their schools next year. Open houses, we've looked, open houses started in this area in October, so they're recruiting in October. There is a push to get some of your families to leave at the break. So they're here now, and they're pushing to get them to come to their schools in January. So the competition is fierce. We only work with traditional public schools. We're in 26 states. We believe wholeheartedly in the fabric of public education, and we think that that is the utmost important to the entire country and to our communities as a whole. You all are tasked with educating everyone. You do not have the luxury to cherry pick those families that you want, you can exclude because of behavior problems, because of learning disabilities. And so what we do is, we use our expertise, which we've had for over 20 years running issue campaigns, referendums, that is where our DNA comes. So when you're talking about, I know when you all are going out knocking on doors to get voters, we're doing the same thing to get families. We're going out there with the Communication Department and taking that narrative and just taking it one by one. We understand the challenges around trying to communicate to every parent as a whole. So what we're doing is, we're going out here advocating at the school site. And I think oftentimes when we think about what are ways to really get parents invigorated about coming back to the district, or to the district for the first time, is we need to be able to speak to them directly and highlight those individual schools, and we've had a lot of success with that. We only work on a performance contract, meaning most of our districts, they see that the benefit with this is, as Superintendent mentioned, you get the benefit of, I think it's three things. It is time that you get, you get the luxury of us going out there 10 years ago, making the mistakes, finding out which systems work, finding out, we have a system that we house all of our communications, our phone calls, our texts, our emails. Sometimes some systems don't talk to each other. You get the luxury of knowing, don't go spend a half a million dollars on this system because it's not going to work with your text messaging system. So you get the benefit and the time that we've spent with that. You also get the benefit from a staff perspective. We're a very data-driven company. 61% of our successful phone calls happen, or I said, not only phone calls, but attempts when we're knocking on doors, everything, happened between 5:00 and 8:00 PM, and on Saturdays and Sundays. We work seven days a week. We understand the challenges that exist when district personnel try to take those type of hours up. And we work in nine months, typically nine months a year. And so this is not a one-time, you know, go by the neighborhood and let's see what we can get. On average, it takes us between 27 and 36 attempts to get someone to commit one time. So those systems are important. We spend an exhaustive amount of effort training our, we call them outreach specialists. These are people that we're training at the direction of district leadership, knowing about how to register families, not us doing it, but explaining to the families that when they're interested, how to go through the process. We're always trying to advocate for the families that we're engaging with, and it takes a lot of sales coaching, so we do a lot of that. Lastly, I would say the expertise, it is hard to find and keep staff that are trained in doing this kind of work. And they're incentivized, I mean, they get bonuses for every parent that has kids that want to come back to the district, or that's brand new to the district, that's always attended an alternative option. So we feel that, you know, my wife and I have talked about, you know, I mean, we're a big proponents of, just even before I got in the business, you know what, Adrian, I think we can homeschool the kids. I told my wife, I said, "Look, I think I'm very smart, I think you're very smart." I said, "But that is not my expertise, I'm not an educator, so I need to focus on what my strength is." And I think we need to make sure we're allowing the schools to go do that, because that's what they're good at doing. So we get why sometimes district, I think in a perfect world, you would want the individual school selling it. But my wife works at a school in Memphis. I can tell you, she feels like she's overworked and underpaid, and so when you want to put one more thing on top of her, you're going to have a problem. And so I do think that this leverages the partnership, because you have no risk at all, it is a positive return on taxpayer-funded dollars. Every dollar that we bring in, as you mentioned, turns over 10 times, and you only pay us one time. So if we get a parent to bring two kids back, you pay us one time. On average, we're seeing those kids stay 3.2 years. So you get the compounding effect that it's going to pay for itself many times over. And as Superintendent mentioned, you know, getting the process going and started is a monumental task. What are you missing out on as an opportunity cost in the meantime by not taking on this kind of initiative? So Paige, I don't know if I missed anything, but we're excited about what we did last year, and I'm just even more excited if we have the opportunity to continue what we can do next year, because families are excited. I mean, I think it was 76% of your schools are A or B rated, you know, A-rated district, I mean, these are things to-
Celebrate.
-to celebrate and be happy with. And I can tell you that a number of your families are still unaware, those that are going to alternative options of some of the programs you have, they're just unaware. And so us going out there and sharing that narrative has been great, and I think, I'll end with this, the last thing that, if we can't get a parent to come, I think something that's very valuable is, and we give that feedback back to the district, is why they did not want to come back. You can learn a lot from that, and that is very valuable. Our number one goal is, we want to get those students, but two, we want to provide that feedback, because oftentimes you may find out there's a certain criteria and data that's being given back to you that you could adjust in policy. And so, yeah, if you all had any questions-
Questions, we're here, happy to answer.
Yes.
Member, I'm sorry, Member Ferrante, you want to follow up on, oh, okay, Member, okay, Member Gallo's next, then Member Ferrante, then Member Salamanca.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, thank you for bringing 1,900 students back to Orange County Public Schools, we appreciate it. I appreciate that this is performance-based. You know, a lot of times, and we have marketed our schools, as Dr. Vasquez mentioned, we have our schools that are constantly on social media, constantly highlighting the great programs, constantly highlighting students. We have our own Communication Department that does that as well, and yet none of the things that we've done over the last five years has moved the needle as much as you have in one year by bringing 1,900 students home. And I understand the desire to look and see if we could do this internally, but if you ask the community, I think the community would tell you that they think we're too hot-top heavy as it is. And as you mentioned, our teachers, our principals, they're overworked as it is, they have too much on their plates. They can't now be marketing connoisseurs and outreach to attract the students that they have. They've been trying to do that through social media and other ways, they do go knock on doors, they do go out in their community, but this is above what should be expected of them, which is why we hired you in the first place. And I think that trying to reinvent the wheel in-house would be way more expensive than what we pay you. And just to be very blunt, we have a lot of challenges ahead of us that we've been talking about for weeks. We've got declining enrollment, we're looking at consolidating schools, we're doing co-op, we don't need to be taking on anything else that you all already do so well. I just don't see the need to burden staff, to burden the district, to burden the superintendent with trying to bring back students when you've already proven that you can do it. So I think that it's more fiscally responsible to stay with you than it would be to try to hire or incentivize people that are already hired to do this job, and I don't think that they would be able to do it well as well, because I just don't think they have the time. I think they're in their schools doing the best they can to educate students and control discipline, and they need to focus on what really matters, and that's educating our students, not marketing the school system. So I appreciate what you do, and I will be voting to keep you at OCPS. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gallo, Member Ferrante.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just a couple of questions. When, like, I'm assuming then you've received some feedback from families who chose not to come?
Yes.
Is there a time when the Board would be able to see that feedback?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Awesome, because I think those are the things that, so this, we voted for this back in April, we've had all this time, and I, for me as a Board member, I feel like it's been not enough communication as far as how many students, how are we verifying that these students are coming from KESA? How are we verifying, are these just students who were in OCPS and left, or are these brand-new students who are coming in? What if they're coming in from another state? These are all questions that I have that gives me angst moving forward. These are all questions that community members have asked me, and so I'm just speaking and being a voice for them. I guess, I don't know, I just feel like I have some unanswered questions.
Yeah, may I? And you may not recall, because it's been a while, but they did the secret shopper experience, and each of you received a briefing, and you received the document? Correct. But that also then put in place some of the reasons why they were not choosing. So we have not provided you the feedback from this summer's initiative, and we can do that, but we did provide you with what they originally did for us as part of that secret shopper. And if any of you need, I think we have a couple of extra of the books that we can get to if you misplaced it.
Absolutely. And Adrian had mentioned it earlier, we are working hand-in-hand with them and adjusting even the messaging and things that are being said as they're out there selling, because they want to align as much as they can in what they're saying to make sure it is aligned with what we have and what we have to offer, because we are an amazing school district. And, you know, them promoting the power of public education while they're out there, and what we provide for our folks here. We did, we do and did provide a list of students who were with us at one time and left, and that's the list that they pursue. They go after those students to bring them back. They may be homeschool, charter school, private school, but that's the list. It was 27,000 students that they worked off of, and certainly that's a diminishing list, because you can only go through that list so much. You'll get, they'll get new data from us at some point with others that have left. But the whole idea is to shrink that number and to get us down where the kid, the children and students that are going to come back will come back, and we'll continue to work with them to make that happen. And again, they do have to do certain things in order to get paid. All of that data is verified. In fact, I sent you some communication that had an asterisk, because we're still even going down to 50 FTE verifying because of, you know, making sure that they do match. And I mean, our team was working all the way through that FTE process to verify that these are our students, and they are in our schools, and they were there for the amount of time that they said they would be. And so we worked, you know, we worked both together and separately on that.
Just a follow-up question, how are you actually tracking the student? Like, how do you, is it just students that are from that list, or how are we tracking that?
Yeah, we have a CRM system, so when we upload all of that data, we track all of that. We do it for quality assurance purposes, because as outreach specialists are talking to families, we want to make sure that we're always saying the best things, and that's where we learn our coaching. But all of our successful or unsuccessful phone calls are tracked there, our text messages, our emails. If we go onsite, if we knock on their door, they don't answer, we leave a hanger at the door, all of that is tracked in one system. And that was what I was kind of mentioning, we had to, that did just not happen overnight. I mean, it was a lot of work that went over that, that took about a two-and-a-half, three-year process to perfect, but we do have all of that in a CRM system.
Okay. All right. Well, I think, you know, just moving forward, I'd love, you know, for, at least for myself, I'd love to maybe have a little more information, maybe even monthly updates of the students, how are we tracking them? Did they, do we confirm that they really did stay for 30 days? And then what I don't, I think what my angst is as well, is I don't want this to become a crutch where we're using an outside source to attract students in that have left. We need to make sure that we have things in place to make sure these students aren't leaving, and really working on that aspect of it. And even for our schools, if a student leaves, you know, is there a way for somebody at the school to be calling those students and just talking to the parents? And those are things that I think we could really coach our own staff on, to help get us in a, on a different path.
Yeah, and one of the things I might have overlooked is, just from a logistics standpoint, when we start engaging with families and we're recruiting them, so we're recruiting for the 26, 27 school year, we're recruiting and getting them to give us commitments. We got to get them to register, we got to get them to show up for the required period of time, and they must stay through that count date period. So we're actively engaging with them all throughout the process. It's not a situation where-
It's one and done.
-it's one and done. Yeah, I mean, they've got, we've got to get them to register, even if we were able to get someone to show up in the springtime. Let's just say we had some successful phone calls, they say, "Hey, look, Adrian, we're not happy with the school, this school promised us the world, they have not delivered, we want to come back." We get them to come back, we don't get paid in the spring. You know, we got to get them to show back up in the fall in order to get compensated, I'm sorry, to get compensated. So it is a very robust and aggressive plan in order to engage with these families. It never, I can almost tell you, I wish it was as easy as, I make a phone call once or twice, and a parent says, "Yeah, I'm coming back." Well, it doesn't happen that way, the people are working, they're busy, "Call me back, I'm cooking dinner." "Hey, I'm at a basketball game, you're gonna have to call me back, call me Monday at 9:00 AM." You know, so those things, so it is a robust and aggressive plan that allows us to stay laser-focused on this initiative, and we're not sidetracked with any other thing. So, and I think that's part of our secret sauce is, we understand the district has a lot of other initiatives, a lot of other things on their plate, whereas we're just singly focused on this one mission, and that has yielded results across 27 states for us, and we're proud of that, and we're proud to only be able to work with traditional public schools as well. You know, we, like I said in the beginning, we really believe in that, and so that's part of our work.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Member, Vice Chair.
Thank you so much, and thank you for being here. I know we're definitely running a bit late today. I'm so excited about everything you're doing. I think that I share with some folks up there that said, I'm getting a ton of questions about this, obviously, because the ultimate number is really big, and I think we are always, $1 million, $2 million, that is significant in times like this where that, as a percentage or in comparison to what we're giving to our teachers and raises, it just raises eyebrows on why we're doing this and how we're doing it, and why can't we do it in-house. So thank you for answering our questions, I think these are really important, because we are getting that. I, similarly, I know that Dr. Vasquez, you sent over the information on the initial number and the success that we've had with that first kind of summer push, and since started working with you all. But I did have the same question, a couple, one, attribution, right? Anything in marketing and outreach, the hardest thing is attribution, right?
Yes.
Like, if I am a company and I put ads on Facebook, on Twitter, on Instagram, and I'm giving you a percentage of my revenue, I want to know who actually brought me that net new customer, not just assume that because you told me I did it. So to the degree that we could get more information on how you guys, you know, let's say 20 new families moved to my area in Lake Nona, and they were going to enroll no matter what in the fall, is that net new to us, is that net new to you all, because you all called them? Like, those in the weeds of, these are new to the county, and they just, maybe you reached to them first, so that's great. But that's kind of the level of attribution or information that I would love to have, and Dr. Vasquez might have given us some of that already, but it's just helpful to have it, because we're getting those types of questions.
I wish there was a way to be able to find out a new family is moving into the area. If we can find that out, then that transcends our business model tremendously. We've tried a number of different ways to find new families. It's very hard, oftentimes that data is already outdated, once it's already, by the time we find it, and they're already in someone's school. If someone is being transferred in, you know, they're not going to wait two, three weeks to wait to put them in school. Oftentimes, we're getting that information 30, 45, 60 days old. So the bulk of our processes around families that have previously attended-
The existing list.
Yes.
So you're mostly working on the existing list.
Yes, yes, that is, that is the bulk of what we, you know, if we're- Yes, yes. That is, that is the bulk of what we, you know, if we're in a smaller district, we do have ways that, because we have run other campaigns, that there's a list for every, for everything.
And I understand that, but that was just one edge use case of attribution.
Yes.
For the existing list, right? Maybe, you know, I have a couple of charter schools that say Renaissance or Matters. Parents historically come in and out between them. Sometimes they go for elementary school, come back for middle or high school. It's hard to figure out why they came back. I would argue, a lot of my parents usually go to Renaissance or Matters for middle school, and are always going to come back for Innovation High School or Lake Nona High School. And I've seen that in pre-you all coming and working with us. And so I think to the degree of the attribution, I'm not doubting it. I think it's, that's the area where I'm getting questions of what, what is net truly all attributed to you all versus coming otherwise? Regardless, I truly believe there's nothing we could have done that would have brought that kind of number across. So I believe you're doing some really good stuff, what you're doing, you're clearly experts at, and you're doing a really good job at it. And I definitely not scared with being aggressive with folks out in my communities. I'm very happy that that's kind of the approach, because parents are busy, and they do need to hear from us multiple times. And that's something that they want and expect, and it's a great starting point of building that relationship, that we care that they are with us.
And we hear that from parents on the regular. They're surprised that the district is reaching out.
Yeah, I'm not surprised or surprised.
They're always very happy about that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think it's a, it's a great relationship builder, that we care that they come back, and that we're trying. So that's important. Everyone loves being sought after.
That's right.
The second thing I had a question about was more, and I think this is some of the data that you're going to bring back. I am really excited to get, you know, if you're reaching out to, remind me again, how big was the list of initial outreach, Cola?
Just under 30.
Yeah, just under 30, about 27,000.
Okay, 27,000, of which, Cola, 2K came back. There's probably a lot of data out there of those who do not want to come back. And I really care about, I'm sure it's not for all 20, there's a response rate percentage, I totally get that. For the percentage that did respond and said, you know, we're not coming back for XYZ reason, I really want to know what XYZ reason is.
Absolutely.
I don't think we have that data yet, that we've gotten at the board level.
Yes, we, no, we, yeah, I mean, that's something that if we can, you know, is it a large list, so we can download it, and we can make sure that we can share that information, because we provide the raw feedback.
I'm happy to have the raw data. I'm happy to do it. There's tools now for that.
What we will do is, we will give you the top seven or eight that we can segment out, so you'll have an executive summary.
Don't worry, you can send me raw, I'm good with that. But I would love to have access to that, because I think that's helpful. I think as we implement policies, if we prioritize things that answer questions on how to bring folks back, is really important. And also with families that maybe we do come back with, and then they leave again, something happened there, and I want to know the why. And so that would be really helpful information long-term. So I'm excited about the partnership. I'm excited to work with you all long-term. I think it's, I'm happy, though, you had the chance tonight to talk about the incredible work you're doing. So I appreciate you staying with us, and I'm obviously supportive of continuing to work with you all. But yeah, just, I'm excited for the more information and data that we're going to get.
Thank you so much. And I will tell you, just as a follow-up, usually what we see the majority of the times, especially at a district that's rated as high as you all, is that typically is there, it's not an indictment on the individual school district itself. It's more of an issue that happened either with something at the school site. So oftentimes there can be-
One negative interaction with one person.
That's correct. That's correct. And so oftentimes, that's why we can help try to navigate and listen. We want to find out why they left. What do they like about their current option? And then let's go back and let's tell them about what options they have that they can come and get at the district. And so it's a three-step process. And so I did want to make sure I shared that with you. It's typical when we, and it's not just here, but across the board, typically their individual school sites, things that happen.
Yeah, we spend time with parents all the time. We hear this, right? I left this school because X happened to me, or there's all kinds of, they're very specific about the why. I think it's just hard for us as individuals to, I can't aggregate it across a district of 200,000. Like, that's a very hard thing to do, because when parents talk to me, or a teacher talks to me, it's anecdotal. What you all seeing out of 30,000 outreach lists is a very different dataset than what I get to see. And so I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Member Venice?
First of all, thank you so much for being here. So many of my concerns have already been raised. I won't be redundant. I would just say that I too have had a lot of feedback from people in the community asking, you know, why we were hiring a consultant to do this. And so I appreciate the opportunity to bring it back and have this further discussion. And just anything to bring transparency to the public, I think, is super important. Again, the request for data, I would appreciate more of that, why people aren't coming. I would also appreciate, you know, your feedback on, because I honestly assumed that we were doing this already, just internally. And so maybe, you know, to be able to share, maybe like, what our, you know, what our communication strategy, like, what part of it didn't work? You know, what wasn't resonating? Why wasn't the things that we'd been doing in the past, like, why wasn't that working? And how is that different from what you're doing? I would appreciate that feedback as well. But yeah, I would just say, again, appreciate you being here and support continuing for another year.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. I think it's been a good discussion. I appreciate the questions that the board has asked, and certainly appreciate having you here. And obviously, I greatly appreciate your passion and investment in public education. That, yeah.
Well, hopefully it comes out. Thank you. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we need to take a vote on this. Is there a motion?
So much.
Motion by Member Gallo. Is there a second? Second by Vice Chair. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you. Member Ferrante, thank you for bringing this up. I do think it was a really helpful discussion for all of us.
Thank you.
It was very helpful.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, anything, gosh, where are we? We are through with the agenda. I am, sorry, I'm, it's been a long.
Are you tired?
I'm tired, yeah. It's been a long and emotional, in a very positive way, meeting. So are we superintendent? I think we're up to a superintendent's report?
I will make it brief.
Huh? Oh, okay. I didn't mean we're up to it. I meant we're to that point. I didn't, you know what I mean?
So first, I want to remind the board that next Tuesday, we will have a work session, and there are several topics. But the one that I want to bring to your attention is that we will be bringing you back the feedback. We will be bringing you the feedback from our seven community meetings. Many of the questions that they asked were similar, and you will then be able to see the rationale behind why we have selected these schools, and the answers to the questions the community had. And then we will come to you with a recommendation. Our goal is, as we promised our families, that we would go back to them in January, respond to their questions, and then let them know what the outcome will be. Second, I wanted to highlight two individuals sitting on the board. Last week at FSBA, we had our own General Counsel, John Palmorini, as this is painful. He was roasted.
John?
Roasted. All kidding aside, he was awarded Outstanding Service Award from the Florida School Board's Attorneys Association.
That's exactly what I'm laughing at.
That, that, so, so that appears that she has gone into my office while I was not
there to take said picture.
Yes, he was. Well, at least there aren't any Diet Cokes in the picture, so I think we're good. But, and all kidding. Yes. Well, I think we can see it. We can see a reflection. But we are truly blessed to have him as our General Counsel. Many, many of the superintendents, and I know school board members, attorneys, have commented on how much they are thankful for his expertise, for his leadership. They can reach out to him, and he is very responsive. As we all know, that is one thing that Mr. Palmorini is responsive. And then our own board member, Felder, was nominated at the Horace Academy Impact Award. And the award celebrates individuals for social change, innovation, and leadership across the different industries. So we're so thankful that she was nominated. If I were giving out the awards, you would have received the award. But we are so thankful for your advocacy, and for all that you do to help our children in District Five really thrive. So, Madam Chair, that is my report.
I apologize for this. I very briefly have to get some direction from you all on a couple of things. First, we've been, gotten some information about a potential class-action lawsuit with regard to the drug companies overcharging for generic medications. It's very similar to the class actions we've been involved with, with social media and insulin. So I would like the board's permission to investigate this firm that's been in contact to see if it's something that's worthwhile. Obviously, if we can get some revenue for monies we've been overcharged for generic drugs, I think that's a good thing to pursue. So everybody's okay with me investigating that? Okay, very good. The second thing, we are going to probably have to change our policy FEA. Policy FEA is, deals with our construction processes, and in the policy, it says that the board will review Phase Three documents. Under the statute, it says either the board or authorized review agents, think your building code officer, think your fire marshal can review those documents. Your policy says the board will approve it. We've gone back, done some research. The board has waived that authority over 50 times since 2016. What we're doing is not in compliance with the policy. Quite frankly, what I would prefer to do is bring a policy back to you that delegates the authority to sign those documents to the building code officers and the fire marshal, with them bringing it back to you as an informational item after they have approved the documents.
Can I explain?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, no. Okay, there is an explanation, and I'm part of it. So, yeah, no, when I joined, and I realized that we were being asked to basically certify in the approval what is, information that we wouldn't necessarily have, like, did the building inspector, yeah, were all those checks made? And so I suggested that rather than asking the board to vote on something that they didn't have direct knowledge or control over, that we delegate that responsibility to the superintendent, which we've been doing. The, what was missing in that was that, when I asked that, and our then General Counsel said, yes, we can do that, what wasn't readily, well, what I didn't know, and I guess none of us knew, was that we had a policy that conflicted with that. So what we were doing in and of itself makes sense, and we want to continue to do that. We need to change the policy to make it consistent with what I think is reasonable. I just really do not like any time the board is being asked to do something that they don't have the, either the expertise or the access to. So I still, again, I think we're doing the right thing. I think it's the superintendent's place, and if something goes wrong, it's, you know, it's on her because she can control it. So, sorry, I'm just, yeah. So anyway, it, again, it was an oversight and unintended, and it will be a very, very easy, quick change to bring back to the board. So.
And so I have consensus to go ahead and do that. And then I couldn't, I would be remiss if I didn't do this. Dr. Armbruster and I have worked together for a long time. Gentlemen in the back, if you could put the picture up.
That's the best thing all night, John.
Thank you. So if you guys, if you all do not recognize, that is Statler and Waldorf. And Dr. Armbruster and I have the same hairline as Statler and Waldorf from, from The Muppets. And so, so I think our own Frank Weber decided to have a little fun with this picture and photoshopped our faces onto it.
Is that where it came from?
That is where it came from.
Oh, gosh.
So I wanted to say I appreciated him very much, and I figured he would be extremely entertained by that.
Wow.
And the thing that, the thing that I, when Doc, when Dr. Vasquez said that she was hiring Dr. Armbruster as her deputy superintendent, as you know, I used to sit next to Dr. Armbruster for a while. I said, are you really sure you want to put Mike and I sitting next to each other in a meeting? And it only went over I once. I'll tell that story in a non-public forum. But having said that, Mike, it's been a pleasure to work with you. You are an outstanding deputy superintendent. Your heart, you live with your heart, and we're going to miss you. But I wanted to leave the board with the entertainment of Statler and Waldorf slash Palmorini and Armbruster.
Good times, good times, good times. That's awesome.
And that's it. Thank you.
All right, wow. Okay. Member Gallo?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I will be extremely brief, but I, we had a work session, I think, right before Thanksgiving, and I was, I called in for part of it, but I had to miss it. I was at the Excel and Ed Conference, which was a great, great, great conference. I learned so much. So I did type up four pages of notes of what I learned and what was presented at that Excel and Ed Conference, and they will be attached to the minutes of this meeting. So I just wanted to be on record that I did that. The minutes are attached. The district paid to send me there, and I just wanted the community to know that it was money well spent. I learned a lot, and I'm sharing that knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else with a report? Good, thank you.
Oh, oh, just one thing.
Okay.
Yes, I am.
Just wanted just to mention that Friday, the great historical Jones High School would be competing for the state football championship. This is the third time Deb Johnson, maybe third time will be a charm. Mind me, okay? Y'all pray for them. Yes. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Chair, a moment, really quick. I talked to Dr. Vasquez, but I want to mention to the board, when I did my one-on-one with Dr. Vasquez, I asked that John be removed from clock duty, because he's, needs to focus on us, as we're a lot of work, and that we need to find someone else to do clock duty. And so the superintendent was going to look into that. So I just wanted to bring up, she's pointing at somebody, I just wanted to bring it up for awareness, because I feel, I feel like it's too much for him to do and listen to us and answer our question and run the clock.
And you're thinking this is the ideal time to bring it up, since she tried to cut the superintendent off with the timer? Did you miss that?
Yes.
Yes, that's exactly, yes. That was her strategy, yes. I gave you way too much credit there, but yes. Yes, yes. Okay. No further business? Meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.
My gosh.
Wow.
Alicia?